Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of the City of College Station City Council. We have recessed the executive session, and we'll go back into that after this meeting, so I will not read the normal language. Is that all right, Mr. Attorney? I don't have to read this? Good. I'll read it after we complete that meeting. So, we are moving into our regular agenda, then. Call the meeting to order. We have Item 4, Pledge of Allegiance, invocation, and consideration of an absence request. Tonight, we have Chaplain Mike Armstrong, who is here somewhere. There he is. He's going to do the invocation. So, after the pledges, please remain standing, and Chaplain Armstrong will come forward and do the invocation. Join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, high pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts for the blessings of this city and the people who call it home. Thank you for the privilege of gathering here this evening to serve our neighbors and to work for the good of all. As to you grant wisdom, patience, and unity to every member of this council, may their words be guided by truth, their decisions shaped by justice, and their hearts filled with compassion. Lord, remind us always to seek your will above our own. Strengthen those who labor for the welfare of this community and protect families and citizens we represent. As all this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Armstrong. Okay. We do have an absence request for Councilmember Schaefer. Do I have a motion to approve it? Motion made by Mr. White. Mr. White?
Yes.
And seconded by by Mr. Smith. Is that okay?
Yes.
We've gotten a little dialogue that we're not clear enough on our motions here, so I'm trying to be a better steward of that. So, we approve the request for absence from Councilmember Schaefer. We do not have any here visitors tonight, but there is a speaker protocol. There are some speakers come up a little bit later. If you haven't looked at it, I'm not going to read it to you now, but those that have signed up, I think there are three people on one of the workshop items. When you come up, you'll have three minutes to share your thoughts with the council on that particular item. Which brings us, we do have one speaker also on the other, on the consent agenda. But, before we get to that, we have two proclamations. Item 5.1 is presentation proclaiming the week of November 3rd through 7th as Municipal Court Week, and Judge Spillane has quite a staff back there that are all going to come up to the front, so I can read this. Municipal Court does not run without quite a few people, because, as we know, there's a lot of work being done down there in that court. Thank you all for being here. I really appreciate it. Judge, I'll read the proclamation, and we'll get a photograph. You might know from the court, this is coming in a legal-sized piece of paper, not a regular size, so it's got a few extra whereas's in it. Proclamation: Whereas the Municipal Court of College Station, a time-honored and vital part of local government, has existed since January 8th, 1952. And whereas more people, citizens and non-citizens alike, come in personal contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined. And whereas public impression of the entire Texas judicial system is largely dependent on the public's experience in municipal court. And whereas municipal judges and court support personnel have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and conform to the standards set by the canons of judicial conduct. And whereas the municipal courts play a significant role in preserving the quality of life in Texas communities through the adjudication of traffic offenses, ensuring a high level of traffic safety for our citizens. And whereas municipal courts serve as the local justice center for the enforcement of local ordinances and fine only state offenses that protect the peace and dignity of our community and our state. And whereas the municipal judges and clerks continually serve to improve the administration of justice through participation in judicial education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state and local professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the 878 Texas municipal courts and salute their critical role in preserving public safety, protecting quality of life in Texas communities, and deterring future criminal behavior. Now, therefore, I, John P. Nichols, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of College Station, Texas, do hereby proclaim November 3rd through 7th, 2025, as Municipal Court Week, and further extend our appreciation to College Station Municipal Judge Spillane and the court support personnel for all of their vital services, they perform, and exemplary dedication to our community, and call upon all residents of City College Station to join with the city council in recognizing the vital services they perform and the exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed, the seal of City of College Station, Texas, this 23rd day of October, 2025, John P. Nichols, Mayor. And I will say, this of the 878 municipal courts in the state of Texas, this is the number-one municipal court in the state of Texas, far as I'm concerned. You've won many awards. You've won many awards. This court is an exemplary court administration, Judge Spillane and his whole team across the entire state. A lot of cities look at this municipal court to find good ideas of how to move things forward. So, I congratulate them on this Municipal Court Week recognition, and we'll get a photograph here next. But, thank you. Okay. You just got to separate you, otherwise you're going to stand behind me. There we go. Are we close enough to the center? Everybody take two steps to the left. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Judge, thank you. Thank you all. Before the meeting started, I had a chance to visit with a few of our scouts over here who are working on some projects. This is another example, the municipal court, of what your city does and how it's involved with citizenship in the community. So, by the way, Ms. Harrell, former council member here, I just want to recognize you, and thank you for being here. You're probably here as a part of another group, but I wanted to say you were missed on Wednesday night, or Monday night, when we did the plaque outside. I know you had a conflict. You couldn't be here. But, it was, if any of you have not looked, probably 99% of you didn't come in those front doors. When you go out, go out the middle doors and look at the historical plaque that's just inside the door frame. It was dedicated last week. Ms. Harrell and a group of others were very influential in getting that done. So, we had dedication last Monday night. Okay. Texas Arbor Day. The Arbor Day group, I think, some folks in Parks Department. I don't have, oh, here it is, right in front of me. Come on forward and bring your tree or bushes up here with you. This is an Arbor Day celebration. Let's see. We have Katari Dixon and James Campos from A&amp;M Forest Service. We have some members of the Parks and Recreation Department. Carmen Billings from A&amp;M Garden Club. And all of those folks are going to come forward and be represented. And, oh, man, they're going to give us a tree to plant, it looks like. Let me read the proclamation, and then we'll decide how and where to plant those trees. I've been getting a lot of emails from people who are concerned about the trees that are disappearing out on the Highway 6, Earl Rutter Freeway, where they're redeveloping things. I keep telling them, we bought, what, 2,500 trees, I believe, that when, five years from now, when that's done, we'll be replanting a lot of trees out there along the multi-use paths, as well as in other areas. So, we'll do our share of trying to repopulate some of those trees out there when that time comes. Okay. This is a proclamation, Texas Arbor Day. Whereas Texas Arbor Day is celebrated on the first Friday of November as a day set aside for the planting of trees. And I must say, if we get a good rain this weekend, that'll be really good for planting next week, right? I hope we get that rain. Whereas, trees can reduce erosion, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance economic vitality, and beautify our community. And whereas, the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service alongside College Station Parks and Recreation Department is celebrating the many treats and Texas trees is celebrating the many treats that Texas trees provide on Friday, October 24th, at the trunk-or-tree tea. I'm sorry. I should have read this earlier. They're going to celebrate the trunk-or-tree tea at Wolfpen Creek Park. And whereas the A&amp;M Garden Club, in partnership with the College Station Parks and Wildlife Recreation Department, is hosting an Arbor Day ceremony on Friday, November 7th, at Richard Carter Park. Now, therefore, I, John P. Nichols, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of College Station, Texas, do hereby proclaim November 7th, 2025, as Texas Arbor Day. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed, the seal of City of College Station, Texas, this 23rd day of October, 2025, John P. Nichols, Mayor. So, I congratulate that group and want to recognize them. You're going to be the recipient, the official one? Let me stand beside you here. Tell me, what's happening out at the park?
So, tomorrow, we, at Texas A&amp;M Forest Service and City of College Station, invite you to join us for trunk-or-treat. This is an event to celebrate Texas Arbor Day, and it's going to be from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM at Wolfpen Creek Park. So, we're going to have a lot of fun. People are going to come in costume. There'll be music. There'll be food. So, come join us to celebrate Texas Arbor Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And what do we have here?
We've got some beautiful oaks, and we've got some sycamores to share. So, these are for the council people. So, if you'd like to donate them to the city, you're more than welcome to do so.
Without any complaint from the council members here, I think we will donate these to the Parks and Recreation Department for adding to the plan that you already got in place for putting trees in the ground. So, they're very attractive. I'm happy to see that they're all labeled. So, you guys in the Parks Department can have those and take them, put them in good use, but wait till the rain comes. Thank you. Thank you all. Thanks for being here. Thank you. Okay. We have no one signed up for here visitors, and Item 6, we'll pass that by and go to the consent agenda. There are quite a number of items on the consent agenda. 7.11 through 7.13. Councilmembers, please note that many of these are simply contracts that execute agreements that we already have in our budget. They've already been debated in the budget. However, there's some items that are not. I do have one individual who will speak on 7.2. Is there any others that need to be pulled off for questions? I don't see any. So, Mr. Dorsett, are you here? Let me just read it first, and then, if you're here, please come forward. 7.2 is presentation, discussion, possible action regarding ordinance. Amending Chapter 38, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 6, Traffic Schedule, Section 38-1014, Traffic Schedule 14, Number 14. Oh, no parking here to corner, and no parking anytime of the Code of Ordinance, City of College Station, Texas, to remove stopping, standing, and parking between certain hours on Timber Street, Timber Creek Lane, Buffalo Creek Loop, and Cottonwood Creek Lane. And Ms. Emily Fisher, if you'd come forward. I think the only reason that this is being pulled is because Mr. Dorsett has indicated he'd like to speak. So, have you talked to Mr. Dorsett? Is he here? Mr. Dorsett?
I'm here virtually.
Oh, virtually. Okay. You, I think you wrote us an email, so would you please make your statement, and I'll, and Ms. Fisher and Mr. Smith are here to listen as well. Please proceed. Mr. Dorsett, please proceed.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Philip Dorsett, and I live in the Estates of Creek Meadows neighborhood. And yes, I'm coming to you tonight to express support for a portion of the restrictions proposed in this item. But, as I stated in the email, I'm asking that you consider removing a portion of the ordinance before approving it. Basically, there are two problems with the ordinance as written. One, it doesn't properly address the issue, I feel. And two, it actually prohibits overnight parking for residents of the neighborhood, which isn't its intended purpose. So, as written, the ordinance, as you know, removes parking on both sides of the street, all four streets, actually, twice a day, every day, except Saturdays and Sundays. Now, for context, and you'll see a map here in a moment, if you don't already, not that I provided, but the city's map. The safety issue, which absolutely does exist here, involves cars lining up along the section of timber that runs north to south, just inside the entrance to the subdivision. And I realize the removal of parking needs to extend beyond this immediate area, but I just wanted to give a little geographic context with regards to where the problem actually occurs. It's just along this short section of Timber Drive running parallel to Greens Prairie. So, like I said, there's definitely a safety issue. I have two boys who bike to and from school every day, and I can tell you that the afternoon parking removal is absolutely needed. Cars line up there to avoid pickup lines at the schools, and it causes a lot of issues for kids walking and biking home from school. But, the problem doesn't exist during the morning hours. School drop-off apparently goes a lot faster, so parents don't have a need to park there in the mornings. If you drive through there any morning, you'll see this. My family's seen it. City traffic engineer's seen it. There's not an issue in the morning, but for some reason, we're trying to prohibit parking in the morning, which, to me, doesn't make sense. By removing parking during the morning hours, the ordinance essentially prohibits residents from being able to park on the street overnight, since people haven't left for work or school yet by 7:00 AM, when this ordinance would kick in. And those of us who work 9:00 to 5:00, for instance, usually leave around 8:30. So, we'd be in violation if we parked on the street the night before. And as more and more kids in our neighborhood reach driving age, as families start having more and more cars, this is going to be an even bigger problem. And, you know, it's not like we can just park on the other side of the street, because the ordinance removes parking on both sides of the street. So, what if a family wants to have an overnight guest? Does everyone have to cram their cars in the garage and drive away before bedtime? And, you know, block each other in in order to keep from being ticketed the following morning, or towed, for that matter, the following morning at 7:00 AM? So, to me, it seems like a bad way to solve a problem that doesn't even exist with regards to that portion of the ordinance. I'm just asking that you keep the morning, I'm just keep the afternoon portion and remove the morning portion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Perfect timing. I should have allowed Ms. Smith, or Ms. Fisher, or Randall to come forward. Just give us a little background on this first, and then, address the concern that Mr. Dorsett has. And is there any fix to that, or not? Go ahead and present.
Not sure if it's going to be put up there or not. I don't know if that will be happening. But, what brought this to our attention was, back on August 20th, we received a complaint from a resident to bring it to our attention. At this point, we're speaking with the resident. I was informed that this has been going on for upwards of five years. And so, we took it initiative to go out there and look at it, and we realized that there is a problem with people not using the pickup and drop-off lines. So, to be consistent with every other sign that we use in the city, whenever this problem occurs near a school, we remove parking from 7:00 to 9:00 AM, and from 2:30 to 4:30 PM. These are the same signs that we use on Ledgestone, and these are the same signs that we have throughout Creek Meadows neighborhood when it's adjacent to the school. And as far as I know, we haven't had any other issues with those signs once they've gone up.
As I recall, you had a public meeting, or a meeting of the neighborhood?
Yes, we did have a public meeting. We had a public meeting on October 7th. We had 10 different families show up, all in support of it.
No, because everyone else that showed up was in support of it?
That's correct.
All right. Councilmembers, any further questions from any of you? We've heard Mr. Dorsett's comments. Mr. Yancy?
Yes, sir. Thanks for all you do for the city. Is there any unintended consequence of removing the morning, as the gentleman speaker suggests? Any negative consequences of amending the ordinance as proposed?
If we were to amend the ordinance as proposed, there could be negative consequences later. But, as it stands now, we did go out and observe, and in the morning hours. The first day that we went out there, we didn't observe anyone using that area during drop-off between 7:00 to 9:00. Since then, the rest of the week, we have been watching it, using our traffic cameras. We have it turned that way, and usually a handful, anywhere between two to five cars on a regular basis, use it in the morning. In the afternoon, it's absolutely completely blocked, and a fire truck or any other emergency vehicle couldn't get through there.
So, his feedback is accurate, that it's not really a morning problem?
I would say that his feedback is accurate.
Thank you very much.
And Randall, just to be clear, I mean, I think everybody knows this, but if the council were to choose to only do the afternoon, and we saw there was an issue, nothing would prevent us from bringing back the morning?
Nothing. We would, if that's the will of the council, we would simply vote against this and ask the staff to come back with a different ordinance?
No, you'd just make a motion to...
Oh, we can amend it. We can amend it right here?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Well, if there aren't any further questions to staff, I will go back to the entire agenda. Does someone want to pull 7.2 from the consent agenda? We'll vote on the rest of them, or what do you want to do?
Please, Mayor.
You want to pull? Pull?
Let's remove 7.2, please.
Okay. 7.2. Is everybody okay with the rest of them, then? 7.1 through 7.13, except for 7.2.
I would move approval of the consent agenda minus 7.2.
The motion made by Ms. McElhaney. Who is seconding it? Mr. Wright is seconding it. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to vote to approve all items except for 7.2 on the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Now, we have Item 7.2 from the consent agenda that is left. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd move that we amend the ordinance as written to remove the morning parking restriction, Mayor.
Is that clarified enough for staff? Okay. Motion made by Mr. Yancy. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Smith. Ms. Smith, did you get Mr. Smith's name? Good. We'll have a little fun with that one. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Does anybody, do you wish to speak to your motion? I already have. Okay. The motion is to, you heard the, well, wait a minute. This is a motion to amend. Is that correct? So, this is not the motion on the underlying item. It's a motion to amend.
No, you've moved to adopt this as stated, so with only the afternoon restrictions.
Is that what your motion is?
I didn't amend a motion. There wasn't one before us. I moved to amend the ordinance.
To approve this ordinance excluding the morning time restriction?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that confirmed with yours?
That's what I understand.
Okay. Good. It sounds like we're all set. All right. All we need to do is vote once, then. All those in favor of the motion as amended, as changed, which you've heard, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously, so we pass that, but with the, without the morning restriction. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your efforts in certainly following up on citizen complaints in that area about standing and parking. Okay. Well, that moves us pretty quickly, then, through to Item 8, which is the workshop agenda. Item 8.1, Mr. Armstrong, presentation, discussion, possible action on the Northgate Small Area Plan Engagement Report Update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Anthony Armstrong, Director of Planning and Development Services. So, this item is a follow-up from the July 10th meeting of the city council, where we originally brought back the results of the Northgate Small Area Plan effort. We presented an engagement report, which had about 50 items within it, that was generated from the community for council's consideration. Here's just an overview of that process that we went through, as a reminder. So, we started this back in January. July 10th, we presented the final findings to council after a series of different workshops and citizen engagement, and very targeted community engagement in the area. It ended up with this engagement report plan, which we also resent to council this week, just for your review. I have the slide in here. This was something we can come back to. This is what we put together as a key themes across all the items for different categories, kind of themes that we saw throughout the plan. So, this is more for a reference material for you and considerations. But, the brunt of what we're here to talk about is really a discussion from council on what is really that next step. So, at the July 10th meeting, council asked, they could have some time to review the report. We had mentioned as well that there's various items within these 50 items that we've kind of already started in some way, shape, or form. And so, what we did is we went through, you can see a snippet of it at the bottom of the screen here, but we went through all 50 action items, and we kind of bucketed them into different categories. The first one is things that are already happening. So, for one way or another, staff, the city is already working on those items actively. We've already gotten a direction, or the nature of that item is something that we do regularly. It's already kind of in the works. The middle column only has a handful of items primarily related to BPG, Master Plan Implementation. We're in the process of updating that master plan right now. And with that, a lot of these suggestions and ideas would be part of, could be part of that process, so we're going to look at baking them in to that master plan that council would receive later on and adopt. And the... And the last one is really what we're here to talk about is the, about thirty action items in there. That is for, uh, if we're going to move forward with that, we need council direction specifically. So a number of ways that could look like, and so I'm going to come back to the top of the slide here. We could do it a couple of different ways. Uh, these are just some ideas from from my mind out to you guys, but there's other ways that we could do this as well to councils, um, what they would like to see done. Uh, the first would be finish out the small area plan process. So we talked about this a little bit um, back in July, but what that would mean is we'd go, staff would analyze all these items. As as a reminder, all fifty of these items did not come in any way, shape, or form from staff. There's no analysts of these items. It's purely, we took the community's feedback, we put it in a report, we shipped it off, and this is where we're at. So we would go back, look at all these items, uh, analyze them from a staff perspective, uh, with various departments. What's the feasibility, uh, timeline, uh, what would be involved? We'd kind of go through a little bit of of high level analysis of them. Um, and really, at the end of the day, we would generate what's called an implementation plan. So when you look at our comprehensive plan, you look at other small area plans, um, the big thing you get out of a small area plan is that implementation report. At the end of the process, um, everyone's kind of looked at it, and what it does is council adopts a small area plan. You adopt that implementation report along with it, and it gives marching orders to future councils, future staff on this is what we've decided we want to start moving towards. Um, the comp plan is a very, very easy one to to look at for how how that, uh, system works. Uh, the other would be just to look at, um, everything in this list of thirty items. You could just direct staff, uh, on individual items. So if there's something in here, as you've had a chance to review it, or if you want to discuss it amongst, uh, the rest of council tonight, you can look through and say, hey, we want you to go actively start pursuing this item. You could kind of do that as as a one-off request. Um, and we could have this for you guys. Um, you would, you obviously have this report. You could come back and say, hey, we want you to start acting on this item, uh, et cetera. Um, a third option could be that staff could kind of, in between the two, if you will, we could go back, look at the items in here and kind of staff could come forward with a list of what we would recommend. Um, could be actionable, so a little bit truncated process on the small area plan process. We try to, we would go back, look at the thirty items and say, hey, these are ones that we think, um, uh, might be easily done. Uh, they're in line with other efforts that that we're doing across the city. Uh, the price tag might might not be a whole lot. We can kind of bake that into budgetary SLA processes throughout the years. Um, and you could give direction on that process. There's also any other way that you guys imagine you want to go about this. Um, ultimately, what we're looking for at the end of the day is there's these thirty items out of the fifty that you all have a copy of, um, and kind of what what would you like staff to do with that direction is the ultimate question. And with that, I'm available for any questions. Well, it's short and sweet tonight for me, but.
Have, uh, who would like to start with the questions?
Where was the packet attachment on this one? Did we get that back? I I'm having trouble locating. Where did you email that separately?
Uh, so the I-
Pull that thing up.
It got sent out, I, maybe it could. I know it got sent out with the presentations as a separate attachment. Um, agenda questions, and it also is in the packet.
I've got a separate item on my, on my iPad, but I can't roll it past the, I did earlier today, but I can't roll it past page four, which what you're showing.
It did that to me too. It cuts it off somehow.
So we can't, we can't really see, as I recall, that third, that third bucket, which you really want guidance on, extends two or three pages, and for some reason, we aren't able to, uh, pull up anything beyond page four, so.
But it is in our packet, page, beginning on page two eighty-nine of four seventeen.
Yeah, I guess I have to go back to the, um, to the-
Oh, the little bitty type, that's right.
Maybe that's where I saw it.
Mayor, are we ready for questions?
All right, let me see if I can find that.
Yes, Mayor. Are we ready for questions, Mayor?
You're not able to roll that up, I gather, because?
I'm working on it right now.
Okay.
Or you can read the the three-point type.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll get to it in a second here. We'll get, we're getting on it, but I, I, there are several, I got several points I want to make, but I'll let you work on getting that.
August, wait. It's in the folder, if you want to go to the presentation folder.
I've got it here. I got it on my screen now. I pull it up out of the package itself.
It's the very bottom attachment.
There we go.
Zoom in a lot.
Needs direction from council, so.
On the right-hand column.
Fellow council members, um, they're looking for some direction. Do you want to, uh, add any direction or ask any questions?
Yes, Mayor. Please, sir.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Yancy and work our way back this way. Mr. Yancy, proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Anthony, thank you for this presentation. I'm just going to dive right into real tangible stuff and let you give me the urban planning answer version. Planters, beds in front of the city parking garage, maybe getting artificial turf, and some iron benches, furniture on that, you know, really projecting that we care, um, what it looks like down there. I presume that that is caught up under a bucket of stuff that you guys call, which one was it? It's in one of these somewhere, uh, emphasis on maintaining existing areas, something to that effect. Are those things gonna? I I know there's been some stuff happening down there, and I'm very appreciative for it, but are some of these more tangible? Like the, I mean, we've got plumbing sticking out of the ground and PVC and whatnot in the beds in front of the parking garage, and people walk on the mud and there's nothing growing, so I think maybe we put furnishings and some, uh, uh, some artificial turf there. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so we we've done some preliminary, um, work, uh, so our, the Northgate Division, so Jennifer Luna, uh, who heads that part up, and then with Michael Ostrowski, uh, over EDN Tourism, they've been working with CIP on some very rough, um, kind of getting some ballpark numbers and stuff for what different maintenance things would look like. So, uh, I think you mentioned there was pictures in this report about the area in front of the garage. It's a very bare area, so looking at doing something with that, um, looking at, uh, how to fix the planter boxes, how to do stuff in that kind of drive aisle. Um, I think we've been, they've been working on getting numbers together to do those improvements. Um, but I think the direction piece on, uh, if we are going to move forward and spin, that would still be something that council has to decide on, uh, obviously. Um, and so we've started the the back end legwork of that, I would say, but we'd still be looking for council direction to say, hey, yeah, go ahead and make sure, yeah, that we we do those things. So that would be, that would be new, so to speak. Um, the maintenance thing is something that we can definitely go forward with. Um, there's a lot of stuff in flux, I think, so we could do pure maintenance, remove and replace. That would be under more operational standards, but kind of the stuff that's that's newer would be a direction.
So that's different than like the the maintenance activities we've engaged ourselves in since the initial completion of your small area plan?
Correct.
The things I just suggested are different. You'd put those under capital, or do we got enough elbow room in the maintenance budget to, you know?
It's it's going to depend on how much it is, and I don't know the estimate in someone else that's far more.
So just a quick thing. So, um, after we had the Northgate Area Smart Engagement Process, we went out, did a tour of Northgate with capital improvements, um, walked over and and looked at a lot of the items that need just general maintenance. Uh, that includes picnic tables, which have already been redone, painting of the bathrooms, planter boxes around the trees in the promenade area, as well as the stuff in front of the garage. Those will be maintenance items that will be taken care of, um, within budgets.
Okay, great deal. And then my question on the facade, uh, facade improvement, uh, program, matching funds, I love that. Um, we also had one in here that kind of took me aback to incentivize, and Northgate merchants may disagree with me on this, but we have an incentive in here to keep people from building new structures if they decided their structure was, had reached end of life. We're trying to incentivize folks to renovate rather than, uh, start over and rebuild. Where where did that one come from?
So that would be an item, uh, I mean, it would come from some of the Northgate group, uh, would be, it's more about how do they protect that historic character? So there was a lot of emphasis in the process about the historic nature of Northgate, um, and trying to keep, uh, a lot of those existing buildings specifically in that kind of, uh, block around Patricia Church, Boyette area. Um, trying to restrict the ability for those to be tear downs and rebuilds was a sentiment that we kind of heard from the committee. Um, but again, doing that would be a process. There's a number of ways to do that. There's stuff in here about height restrictions, for instance, um, which would be a pretty, a pretty big, uh, damper on what we're seeing obviously appear out in Northgate. And so that's ultimately a question for council, and if y'all would like to move that direction with things like height restrictions, do we tighten up on what we have with our, uh, kind of historic? We have a small section in the UDO right now in the zoning ordinance that talks about what you can do to certain buildings. They're that are very, they're very, uh, specific. They're address specific. Um, if you mess with the facade or the or the outside of the building, it's supposed to maintain that character, that look. Um, what it doesn't currently do is that if you just tore it down, you could do that. So I would, not sure I would call that a loophole, but it's meant that if if the existing building stays, it stays as it was. But yeah, to your point, if someone wanted to come in and, uh, if the structure was at end of life, they wanted to tear it down and rebuild, um, that's permissible under the current code. And so one of those, one of those action items that was talked about by the by the committee was, uh, do we want to look at tightening that down to where that maybe is is more difficult?
And, I mean, like the Fort Worth Stockyards, I mean, they started over with a lot of structures, but they maintained that look, um, a a historical element to them. We could, we could codify that somehow if it were council's will.
We could. So the Northgate is one of the two areas in town where we can regulate building materials and colors because of its existing design district status. Uh, you can't do that in the rest of Texas because of state law. Um, so we'd have to look at that to see how far we could go with that, just to make sure we stay in compliance. Um, because the state, uh, about three sessions ago passed a bill that you can no longer regulate, regulate materials or colors of of buildings.
The city surface lot, um, that's, uh, one of your proposals in here, I think, for us to, um, I'll not read the exact wording, but for us to kind of refocus on our efforts on what the citizens believe as expressed through us should happen there. Is that correct?
I would not say it's my proposal. I would say it's their proposal, but yes, that is, that is an item in here, um, that basically what do what do they want to see done with, uh, that surface lot area?
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I had for this time, there.
Thank you, Ms. McElhany. You want to make any comments?
Several. So can you do two things for me, Anthony? Number one, summarize what the feedback was for the surface lot. Um, I know you've got a lot of different ideas. What, give me where the preponderance of the evidence landed and kind of what was a close second?
Oh, gosh. It it honestly ranged the the gambit. Uh, we heard, I think a lot of, there was a lot of main themes would be probably some level of open space. I would say that ranged from individuals. It was anywhere from, they wanted to see beer garden style, um, where it was kind of a, if you've been to the Pearl in downtown San Antonio area, that was mentioned as an opportunity there. Um, similar vibe in a way, if all these high rises develop around it, it's kind of similar to that atmosphere if you've been there or look at it. Um, that was one talked about. Um, that's a very large, basically converting the entirety into a green space, but anything also down to, could be amphitheater space, could be, uh, a mixing where there is still development on there. There's a, there might be, you know, could be developed, that was whatever, whatever private entity wanted to develop the property as. But we maintained a green space. We maintained a separation with, um, the existing, uh, promenade, uh, area, so in between that area, between like, uh, the chicken and Dudley's and my backyard and all that, that we maintained a good clearance there was, I think, one of the more, uh, one of the bigger concerns. But yeah, I think it's, I would say it depended on who you were talking to in the room, honestly. It was a little bit of of all, but certainly there was a uniform desire for open space of some kind. I would say that the size of that open space could be anybody's whim.
Was there much talk of the height of any structure that might go there?
On that property, no, not necessarily specifically, but for that area which is it is in, um, yes. So there was, there was a lot of talk about doing height restrictions on that whole block, which would, which would include this property. Um, and it was really in that the the range was anywhere from two to five stories as a height restriction. So if, um, a lot of it was about keeping, uh, more of the, a lot of people talked about keeping the view, if you were in Northgate, you were, you were out there in in the entertainment district, that you could look out in that area and see Kyle Field or see the university from it. It was, it was more of a, uh, it reminded me of a lot of conversations about the Aggie Field of Honors. They're just anecdotal. But kind of the the Aggie Field of Honor where there's a very distinct view that they were trying to achieve with that project. Um, there was a lot of talk similar to that. Um, but the height restrictions kind of went, yeah, again, from anywhere from two to five stories.
So as I flip through the, the, kind of the bucket three, one of the things that strikes me is probably being most important would be to evaluate the NG one design district standards. Um, I'm a count, common theme throughout all the discussions, if I'm reading the material correctly, is that we need to preserve Northgate, meaning that are the the original bar, you know, line there, right there on university. Um, I think the level at which we're able to achieve that preservation, um, through height restrictions or any other measures that we might take, probably will inform what we do with that Patricia Street promenade to some extent. Um, but I think that that's going to be a hard hurdle for us to cross as we're, um, you know, working with a variety of people, and this is, you know, long-term investment, um, investments for them. So I think exploring the NG one design district standards is is at the, kind of at the top of my list. Um, I do like the idea of us, uh, exploring incentives to attract businesses such as neighborhood scale retail, wellness services, wellness services and grocers is a fabulous idea. We've got a ton. What's the population in Northgate right now? Someone earlier night said maybe.
Right now, without, there's probably another, I would say, three to four thousand on the horizon. There's about ten thousand.
Okay, so fifteen thousand people in a very, very condensed area. Um, that sounds like we probably need some neighborhood support services types activities there. And I, I, as we get bigger and bigger and the traffic congestion continues to grow, we're going to really appreciate if we can keep some cars off the road by letting people buy necessities right there, um, within walking distance. Talk to me just a little bit about the Northgate Park. That's that sliver over by Cherry Street and it's it's a little, little triangle, little small park?
Yes, Mayor.
What, what feedback did you get on that?
Uh, not, I wouldn't say a whole lot. I mean, in general, over the course of of the planning effort, there was a lot focused on, um, primarily the area around the entertainment or bar district. Uh, a little, a decent amount of conversation about Century Square and what they're looking to do there, but a lot of, a lot of the conversation was about connectivity between uh, both of those uses. Um, we, we mentioned and talked about the park and kind of our, our, uh, existing conditions data, but as far as what the committee came out with, I wouldn't say there was necessarily a lot, um, in, in much of any focus on it.
So one of the questions that continues to come up and one that I've become more hyper aware of, the more questions I've asked, or the, just the intrinsic safety issues that exist in Northgate right now. In the course of the discussions that were had with the the working group, um, were there any ideas or thoughts that were put forward as to how to mitigate some of the risks that just exist down there by the nature of the age of the structures and just the the type of activities that go on there?
Uh, not.
Or were there any specific concerns, uh, brought forward by the folks in the working group?
Yeah, and I think, and we've had meeting, a meeting since then, um, or since this original presentation. Uh, there was a meeting with the Northgate Barners Association of at twelve oh seven, uh, kind of a, it's either quarterly or yearly. They're going to start hosting that meeting. Um, and then we had some conversations in there, kind of related to that topic, and and C-Step was there. They presented, I presented, Jennifer Luna presented, um, and kind of just talked to them about things going on in the area. I I think a lot of what I heard more in that meeting, uh, about, um, the nature of of safety issues down in Northgate than I really did during, from the committee process in this. Um, I would say in that a lot of it was just, it was a lot of education, um, is is the biggest hurdle. Uh, and a lot of that is that you have, with our population being a transient population, you educate one tier of the population, then the new tier comes in. And so it's, it's a constant battle, I would say, of of that education battle. Um, historically, we, we try very hard as a city, um, to educate first before enforcement. That's something that we've done across the board in all, all areas, really. Um, whether it be code enforcement, things like that. We, we try this education avenue first. Um, it just makes it difficult in that regard, uh, but from like a recommendation standpoint, we talked a little bit about where PD might need to expand or with the, what facility they might be, might need to use. Um, but there wasn't kind of a recommendation that came out of the committee directly directed to it.
I think that we would be remiss not to look at that in addition to whatever else we select on this bucket three list. Um, safety is absolutely, um, something that we need to be considering. And I think that the city has some very direct opportunities with, uh, And I think that the city has some very direct opportunities with zoning changes. And we of course could control what happens to that, that, you know, mud lot. But I think safety and what we could do to, from an ordinance perspective, to preserve Northgate would be where I would start. With a strong, strong eye to what we need to implement in order to be as safe as possible down there.
Can I ask a follow-up question on, on the NG one part with the evaluate the standards? Is that, just to make sure I'm on the right track, specifically from a historic preservation standpoint?
I think so. And you know, Courtney is here, she didn't sign up to speak. But I know that, that keeping the character of Northgate, preserving what, what Northgate is in all of our hearts is something that's important. And I don't think that we should move forward with anything else until we establish how we're going to do that. That is a huge piece of the, the puzzle. And I think you start with the, the biggest, the biggest concern, which is that we don't want to lose the Northgate we all know and love. So how do we do that? And then after that, how do we leverage our asset, you know, behind that, that strip to, to further whatever that looks like?
Mr. White?
Thank you, Mayor. Anthony, thank you so much. First of all, I'm super excited that we're talking about this. I'm glad the conversation is continuing. We, we definitely need to move forward. I think the, the, the theme that I took away from looking at this is exactly what, what y'all were just talking about. And that is that historical preservation, I don't want to lose that. I think that, that ties into where everybody thinks about Northgate. And whatever we can do to continue that and to build upon that historical preservation is, is, is key because that, in my opinion, drives tourism. And so we definitely need to, to, to do that. Coordinate with A and M is a good one as well. I think we need to focus on transit issues, whether it's bicycle, walking, one-way streets, a left-hand turn or right-hand turn, excuse me, or a left-hand turn on, on Welburn. Those are the things that I think that if we start planning that transit design now, I think it's going to help us in the long run and stuff. I love the, the, the idea of promoting it and such that we have festivals down there. Once again, tying that into our tourism things. We are talking about the small area plan. So what did, what did they talk about when they talk about Hensel Park? Did they, they bring up anything what their, what their thoughts were about what we do with that park?
Certainly at the time, there wasn't a lot of idea. We had, so there was a, back in October, I believe of last year, Councilman Schaefer actually had presented, in part of his line of work, had presented something as a part of his group to the regions at the time on a plan for Hensel Park, kind of what they would do for that whole area. That's what we used as, that was the current master plan idea for what would be going on in that area. So that's what we used and kind of our exhibits are showed to them. I think people were just generally excited about that from a sense of, of that reactivating Hensel Park or reutilizing that space. And most of the conversation was, going back to your point earlier, was about connectivity and, and trying to ensure a, a good level of connectivity between Hensel Park and Northgate. And I would say diving really into that kind of live, work, play, trying to make that live, work, play a reality in that area.
So I, if I recall, Dr. Schaefer's plan was a lot of trails. Did, didn't he have a lot of trails in, in the, in the Hensel Park area with connectivity to, to Northgate, to, to down there on, on that stuff?
Correct. There's, there, so along South College, there was a pretty large commercial hub, if you will, proposed in, in that plan. And then behind that was really a, a large sea of different features with the creek, different features with trails, things like that. The City of Bryan is also working on their north of, north by Northgate or north of Northgate, I can't remember the exact terminology. They've got a, a robust image that they had, they had put together as they were buying up those lots in that neighborhood. They put together an image that shows connectivity with the Sky pedestrian bridge over to Hensel that they were, that they were looking at. And so, but yeah, there was, there was certainly a lot of, I think kind of Lick Creek-esque, very passive use of the rest of the property was kind of the intention.
That's good. So I mean, summing up, I, you know, that historical preservation connectivities would, would be definitely high on my list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Wright?
Right. Can you scroll up there? Cause I'll just try to go a little one by one there. I think, I think consensus wise though, I would agree with Melissa. With historic part of it, I think establishing what those look like, even if it's a height restriction. I think that's important to preserve that character. What I've been kind of saying from the beginning is establish that stretch as Northgate. And I think with that, with the facades, I think a couple of things you, I don't know if it was necessarily like a, no, it wasn't like a slush fund or anything, but in terms of like facade upkeep, having, was that presented, sorry?
It was, yeah. So back in, gosh, nineteen ninety-seven, I think, we had a federal slush fund, not a city slush fund. For, it was, it was grant money that was used for a facade improvement program. It came out of, it was either ARPA funds or C D B G funds. We had done, I want to say it was around eight to 10 different facade improvements through that area over the course of about eight to nine years.
And as your chief financial officer, we do not have any slush funds anywhere. And what Anthony is referring to is, he's correct, that, that federal program back in, in the nineties did make some improvements on some of the, some of the facades. But again, we have no slush funds anywhere.
No slush funds.
So yeah, short of using the term slush fund, some sort of a community enhancement ability.
We use the word buckets.
Community enhancement bucket for facade improvements and stuff. Do you think you can tackle a lot of this through like an overlay, some sort of zoning that says if you're within this, you need to meet certain standards? Is that really the process that we're going to eventually reach if we say this is the criteria of this overlay, about 10 things?
Yeah, so you could do it a couple of different ways. You, you could do an overlay, you could create a new zoning district, which they're almost more or less the same. The difference is if you're wanting to look at uses, you would probably look more at a zoning. If you're wanting to kind of reinvent, not necessarily reinvent the wheel, but do a, a small, a, a large amount of changes to an area, you would do a zoning, a new zoning district, so think something like middle housing. If you're looking to add a couple of requirements, or it could be, you know, a paragraph or two of things that you want to see done, that we would typically do as part of an overlay. So we have like corridor overlays in town. Think of Ruse and Who's that when we have those things that are, it's a couple of requirements that are additional. But it still means that everything on your base zoning district still applies. So if you're, if there's, it depends on what we're looking to change would, would be that. But it could be done either way. They're both very similar processes.
I think the point is not to change. The point's not to change.
Right. But yeah, it could, it could be either way.
Oh, I was just trying, I was trying to think of the, the easiest avenue to kind of establishing some of these things. I think that, you know, what we've talked about so far, a general consensus of kind of maintaining that historic character, maintaining facade and sort of upkeep, not changing the character. Some of the things you had here, it's like, oh, try to fix, not tear down. I feel like that could be accomplished through some sort of overlay as the easiest method. You would know best, but just putting that out there. Can we scroll down? I really, I, I, I like what my colleagues have said. I would say the, the last big thing, you know, I like that, I want it to be a really specific area. And so I kind of talked very wistfully about the signage a couple of meetings ago, but really establishing what that area is and setting it up. If it's just, here's some bricks, let you know you've entered into historic Northgate or a sign or an archway. I think that's going to be really important to just single out the zone that we're really talking about here. And then I would say lastly, I don't think I've answered all your questions, but really trying to hammer down what to do with parking lot. It sounds like it was just kind of all, everyone had a different idea. But I think that goes back to one of the things you suggested was some staff recommendation come forward with some options we could have for that lot, and then we can debate them publicly and we can talk about the merits of each. And just see where that goes. Cause I think ultimately it's still such an important piece to the overall puzzle. And like sitting on it, I don't, I don't think I want to sit on it until we've all debated that we should sit on it. I think we should have options brought forward to us that we can debate and talk about and move forward with, whether it's building something with someone that's maybe not really tall, but is accomplishing a lot of the same stuff. Because some of the big things that we were talking about with the Northgate project that died was the needs of that area, which is a police substation and things like, things like that, that are still very much needed. And that I don't think that we should just kind of sit and wait on. I think that we need to move forward with some sort of proposal to address the concerns that police is having down there, that the city's saying that we need. So I would like to see some more movement on options to actually do something with the lot one way or another and have us have the ability to debate it. Probably haven't answered all your questions, but I think I, I, I'm sort of in a, I haven't disagreed with much of going on to my, to my immediate left. So I think following along with what they were saying as well.
Mr. Smith?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I, I agree with, with, we need to, we need to be presented with some options with regard to the parking lot, the city, that, that piece of property. So that we can debate them and move ahead on that kind of project. I, I have a strong feeling about the city needs to focus on the infrastructure that is the cities. And facade improvement programs and things, it's, it's like, I, I think there's some, some place for that. But we can, we can create that identity with, with paving styles, with streetscape styles, with, with all, all kinds of things in the public space. And whatever we end up doing in terms of development or restrictions on development or preservation of the existing Northgate property, I would really want to see the property owners involved in that decision. I don't think that that's something that the city council should just issue an edict and drop the hammer on the property and say, here's how it's going to be. I want the Northgate business owners and property owners to have a seat at the table and then also to have a stake in the game. With that being, it takes a lot of maintenance to take care of all this stuff. And I think some kind of establishment of a Northgate Business District that may provide some funding, a slush fund, whatever you want to call it. But that would provide a fund that would be dedicated to taking care of the Northgate area. And it would be, and a large portion of that commitment would be made by the property owners in the Northgate area.
Just for, so like a PID?
Okay, let me just add a few more and subtract a few. First of all, looking not at this list, but the list that is kind of ongoing. The first bucket, I'm assuming we're making some progress in all those areas. Some of those are very much, speak to some of the things people talked about. And that is pedestrian safety, for example, that, that bicycle pedestrian demand safety study, that's going to be ongoing, I assume. Somewhere in there, grade separation is, is definitely being at least conceptually developed. And hopefully, I know we're going after funding to try to get some of that done. So I think everything in that category and some of what, what Mr. Yancy brought up about maintenance and upkeep in existing areas and maybe improvement with small, small funds is certainly important. As far as Hensel Park goes, I think that, I mean, I don't know that we need to direct staff to do anything more in that area until we see what is developing with respect to what was laid out by other individuals here a few weeks ago. I think that, that's going to kind of set the stage for whatever happens in Hensel Park. I don't think I'd select that out as a, as a high priority right now, other than the fact that it's kind of an ongoing thing anyway. I do like the discussion, if you go back over to bucket three of the, does NG one, maybe broaden that a little bit? Go down a ways, down next page. There you go. Somewhere, not, not only that, that, that seems to me to speak to a lot of what I've heard here about maintaining the character and, and historic value and cultural character of that neighborhood. I would certainly, I certainly think we need to review that. Somewhere in here, I thought I saw a consideration entirely of that ground floor requirement we have for retail, and that ought to be thrown into that, that sort of a discussion. Is that really, given that's 10 or 15, 20-year-old suggestion, or not suggestion, but guidance, well, not even that, requirement. I know that that's been a bit of a problem in some of those areas, that maybe we need to revisit that. I would kind of put that into that, that same category. As far as our own property lot over there, other than, other than upgrading the maintenance in that lot, I don't think until we do kind of the overall, what back up there, NG one kind of character overview, whether it's an overlay or just rethinking the zoning guidance in that area, what, whatever seems to be flexible. I think that has to come first before we would call on people to figure out what they would do and how they would bid on something on that Northgate parking lot. But I do think it needs to be maintained. The whole area needs to be upgraded maintenance, and I think that's what staff is doing now. And I, I commend them for the efforts they're making with the limited funds they have available to them. There's certainly some broken infrastructure and things that people have identified as they walk through the area. You identified some as you walked through the area. I think those things ought to be addressed, and I think they are in bucket one. But I don't think I would push real quickly the elevating the city parking lot itself until we see some coherence among all the parties involved on, on some of those larger questions. The other thing I would add, and Mr. White brought this up, and it really is part of the city's infrastructure is the street connectivity. There's one item in here about connecting Cherry Street to Maple Street. That's been a vision for councils going back 25, 30 years, is how do we provide another street across from Welburn Road to College at least, that would, would provide a transit across the city. And I don't know whether that helps or not, but I think, I think we ought to look at the whole street connectivity question there. And, and even the question in one way or two way, but I don't think you can do too much on that until you really look at the overall way the streets come together and what could be done. Now, I don't know how difficult or how expensive that would be. You might have to buy a few buildings and tear some down. That wouldn't be much fun. But that would be a cost if you really wanted to blaze a trail across there. And I'm not talking about, please, don't use those words. I'm not talking about blazing a trail through Northgate. I'm just talking about enhancing the ability for traffic to move through and into and out of, of the Northgate area. So I do think that, that street discussion needs to be put in. And also that ought to be ahead of what do we do with the city's parking lot? It's generating revenue, it's providing a service. It, I guess, works fairly efficiently, it needs to be cleaned up a, a bit and maintained. But right now, I'd rather see a few of these other items addressed first. But I also commend everybody on bucket one and, and the efforts you're making in all of those areas. And I certainly think they, many of them will need to be brought somewhere to fruition before you can do some of the other considerations. Cause you'll get information and guidance from them that will help us make decisions on some of these other items in, in two and three. I don't know how to summarize all of this, Anthony. You've got a variety of, of ideas here, but maybe you can kind of collect that in.
Yeah, maybe what I'll, I've got a varying list of, of feedback here that I've kind of been listening to, and I'll probably go back and re-listen to it. I'll probably put something together, and we might be able to send that out to council as a memo just to make sure that I'm not missing something. Um, and then we'll kind of use that as a, as those, if everyone's in agreement or that I didn't miss something on that list, uh, we can, we can look at what the next step would be for that, but kind of use that as what we've heard for kind of moving forward with on items. But general, general theme was, uh, connectivity, um, looking at regulations in the zoning districts, uh, whether it be overlays or new zonings, potentially even if necessary, to preserve, uh, what we kind of consider to be Northgate. When people talk about Northgate, that entertainment district, how do we preserve that character? Um, some different ways to look at, uh, locking that in, so to speak, for the future. And then a number, uh, first thing that popped in my head is what we're about to do for the Midtown, uh, plan with the Charette style for this, for that property, maybe something similar for the surface lot is kind of what I'm hearing. Um, and then identification, uh, for the area signage, public investment into the things that we, we own and control, uh, focus on tourism events. So I'll put, I'll kind of write all this up, get something sent out to you guys, and just make sure I'm hitting it kind of on the right mark.
Is that public investment? Uh, that public investment piece, is that part of sprucing up what we've got down there?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think, uh, yeah, as you go through that, there's a lot of things that weren't even mentioned by this group, so maybe you can eliminate some of those out of there. I'm looking at the bottom one, for example. Pop-up, uh, public spaces, key locations, that's not a high priority, I don't think, in, in what you heard. Obviously, that would be part of maybe a larger question of what, what's in NG1 and all that. But I think you can go through this and eliminate some of the ideas here from, from the list. Maybe create a bucket four. Those are to be considered at a future time. Uh, and a bucket three would be the things you, that this group brought up. Okay, any other comments before we move on?
Mayor, just one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Our new coordinator that, that, uh, visits and we're doing regular meetings, I understand, like when we get ready to do these things, these spruce-up projects, uh, quasi-capital, mainly maintenance, do we communicate to the merchants what's coming? Get, this work's going to start next week. We've done this, we've hired whoever, and here they come.
Yes, so Jennifer Luna, she's our Northgate District Manager. She's in constant communication almost daily. That's really kind of her, her, her main focus and role, uh, with Courtney and other, uh, Justin Manning, other kind of prominent figures in, in Northgate area, letting them know things that are happening, um, things like this meeting. If we would be going, some of these things in here, as we would go forward, um, we'd be reaching out, uh, to get their feedback on for, as we kind of hone in on requirements or what that might look like. Uh, we would be hosting kind of meetings or, or stakeholder sessions with them for some of these to begin with, so.
As one member of council, I think a steady drumbeat of those improvements would go a long, long way. Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Anthony, for, um, keeping this discussion going. It's, um, almost a never-ending project, but that's how development occurs and redevelopment.
Keeps me employed.
Okay, we're moving on to, uh, if the council wills, to item 8.2, which presentation discussion regarding overnight parking options. And this does not require any action, just a discussion and update of what, uh, staff and, and others have found out through the, through the, um, engagement process. And I do have people, three people signed up to speak after staff presentation.
Good evening. Jennifer Profska, uh, City Manager's Office. Uh, this item, as Mayor mentioned, is to discuss input that we have received on potential overnight parking limitations in the East Gate and Southside areas. And we've scheduled this item to provide the information from the public engagement process, give council an opportunity to hear from those that are interested in discussing this topic with you. Um, but again, there is no action scheduled for tonight. I'm going to give a brief, uh, background, and then we'll move into the public engagement, uh, feedback that we got. So, uh, over the past couple of years, we've seen an increase in street parking that's led to concerns in the neighborhoods about traffic levels and traffic flow, pedestrian and bicycle safety, um, issues with trash collection, and concerns about emergency vehicle access. And with that, we have received, uh, a number of requests from the neighborhoods uh, to regulate parking in Southside and East Gate areas in some way. So earlier this year, uh, the staff presented to you all, um, some potential actions aimed at reducing the volume of on-street parking in these areas, um, and at that time received direction, uh, from the council to take a look at overnight parking as the option, um, and what that might look like. The ultimate goal, um, is safer streets in these areas, and the hope is that, um, by reducing overnight parking, you could reduce some of the permanent parking on the streets. It would still allow daytime parking, evening parking, and so, um, the intent would be to remove that permanent parking that has landed on the streets to, um, help decongest the areas, um, in some way. Uh, this slideshow, this slide shows some of the challenges that we see in these areas. Um, with a lot of on-street parking, we tend to see a lot of parking violations. Um, we see parking in the yard, we see blocked fire hydrants, we see parking up into and around intersection corners, and of course, um, parking in areas that are already signed for no parking. This is, uh, a portion of the Southside area, um, that I'm using to illustrate that we have already removed a significant amount of parking in the Southside area. East Gate doesn't have a lot of areas where parking is restricted, but Southside does. There are, um, uh, smaller street widths in the Southside area, um, and, uh, this area has seen more pressure from daytime university-related parking, and so parking has been removed on somewhere around 35 to 40% of the streets in this area. When we talked to the council back in July, we looked at, um, what areas we may consider uh, looking at some form of parking regulation, um, on, and after a discussion, decided to focus efforts on single-family properties within about a mile of the university, um, in areas that are already experiencing, uh, high levels of on-street parking. And here's what that looked like when we mapped that out from a neighborhood perspective. It's basically Southside and East Gate with some surrounding areas that fall into that mile radius, um, or where the continuation of a street or adjacency, uh, would likely mean parking would spill over into those areas if it were removed in others. Um, and so this was the area that we moved forward with. We have, there are some carve-out here, carve-outs here, carved out, uh, private streets, basically. Uh, in July, uh, the council asked that we engage residents and property owners in these areas to be sure that they knew about the potential, uh, limitations on overnight parking and had an opportunity to give their thoughts and their feedback about what that may look like, uh, to them. Uh, we were also asked to get feedback on potential hours of removal uh, and what special events or weekends may look like moving forward. So in September, we hosted an open house meeting and put out a digital survey that, uh, was open for about a week, uh, to get some, uh, some input. We used direct mail, yard signs, social media, um, uh, website, and our local news outlets to people, to let people know, uh, that we wanted to hear from them, uh, and actually had a very good response on this, um, engagement. The open house was set up to help answer people's questions first and foremost before they gave their, their feedback, to make sure everybody understood what it was we were and we're not talking about. Uh, we had staff from code enforcement, Public Works, the Fire Department, Planning and Development, and they were all available to talk about what overnight parking removal could mean in each of these areas, uh, and then answer specific questions that folks may have and, uh, get any feedback. Uh, had information related to current parking regulations, how we enforce parking, what the overnight proposal may look like, and then development reg- regulation. If somebody was wondering, what would it look like if I wanted to add parking onto my individual lot? We had about 165 people attend. Uh, we had a sign-in sheet. We asked what neighborhoods they were representing, not necessarily where they lived. Uh, about 60% of those 165 signed in saying they represented Southside and 20% representing East Gate. Uh, so that's another 20% that represented somewhere else in the community, but they had interest in this item. We debriefed with the staff after the meeting and came away with three consistent themes that the staff heard through their conversations with the residents and property owners that, uh, spoke with them. First, we heard a lot of concerns related to public safety and service access. So, uh, folks saying that they were worried that if an ambulance was called, it couldn't make it down the streets if needed, based on the parking that existed. Um, and that, uh, giving feedback that what they witnessed is sanitation trucks struggling to collect cans with the amount of on-street parking, um, on those, uh, trash days. The second thing that we heard is that, uh, stronger enforcement is needed on existing parking violations in the neighborhood. Uh, again, in Southside, there are a number of areas that have parking removed, um, altogether. Um, and so they are seeing some parking in those areas as well as parking in the yard and, um, vehicles blocking driveways and mailboxes or parked out to intersections. We obviously see these things on game day and other special events, but, um, are seeing them, or the neighbors are seeing them on other days of the week as well. Some of it may be an education issue, like parking in the yards. Some communities allow that, some do not. And so, um, especially when you have a large number of people living in an area that haven't always lived in College Station, they may not be aware of that regulation. At the meeting, we had, uh, two maps where people could give kind of a quick thumbs up or thumbs down vote, if you will, on overnight parking limitations. The intent here was for people to see, see the conversations and, and opinions as they were happening. So different opinions exist, um, throughout the neighborhoods and certainly in that room. And while the, these maps may not be representative of what these neighborhoods feel about parking, it was certainly representative of what the folks in the room that night that chose to participate in this activity felt. Uh, people tend to think, especially, especially on issues like this, that everybody thinks the same thing they do, and they say, we want parking removed. Why won't you remove it? Or we will never want parking removed. And so we wanted people to see kind of in real time that there are really mixed opinions on this, um, issue. It is a complex issue, and, uh, probably every household has a different set of circumstances and where this could potentially affect them differently. So you can see here that in Southside, the image on the left, uh, it was pretty split. You see the areas closer to, um, uh, the university and to the west primarily saying, no, I'm not interested at all in, um, removing overnight parking. And then you kind of have the, the core of that area saying, yes, I support overnight parking limits. We had a third option that was, I support it, but not on the weekends. We only had one vote for that. Um, and some of that, I think, um, when you talk to folks more, they were willing to talk about that middle option, but when you're giving your opinion here, you probably had an opinion one way or the other. Uh, the map on the right is of East Gate, and we just really didn't have a lot of participation on, um, this map to see any real trends there. Some fours, some against, um, but nothing real consistent in any area. We also provided, uh, a link to a digital survey at that meeting and made it available online for the week following the, the public meeting. You were sent these survey results as a separate attachment, um, with your presentations this week. And I'll walk through high level what those results told us. Uh, this was by no means a statistically valid survey, and it's probably better to think of it as a public input tool and not a survey. Um, it was open to the public. Anybody could complete it. They did not have to live in the neighborhood. They did not have to live in College Station. And so we got, um, a, a lot of response on that. Um, in fact, the survey was shared, uh, by KBTX and the battalion, um, CSAN sent it to their membership, and Student Government Associate, uh, Student Government Association shared it as well. So there were lots of folks that had, um, uh, the ability to kind of give their feedback through this survey. All right. Generally, this is what we know about, uh, who responded to the survey or what they chose to tell us about themselves. Um, we did have over 1,400 responses. That's a really great response. Uh, showed about 20% in East Gate and 60% in Southside, meaning about 20% uh, from other areas. This is consistent with the public meeting attendees. Had that 20, 60, 20 split. The, ask a question related to the tenure of, um, residents, um, how long they lived in their home. And, um, between the two areas, it was somewhere around, uh, 45, 47% had lived in their home for a year or less, and, uh, 78 to 87 had lived in their home fewer than five years in these areas. Of those that took the survey, four out of five opposed the overnight removal. Um, when asked if it were made in ordinance, what time would they prefer to remove the overnight parking? The 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM slot was preferred, and again, it was a four out of five people voted for that option. Uh, the survey showed that more than half of the respondents lack sufficient onsite parking at their homes in these neighborhoods, and that regular overnight street parking is the norm in East Gate and Southside. It is not an occasional thing. I think we know that by driving around. Um, but that guest parking is needed routinely. It's not just something that is needed occasionally. There's some sample questions and results on the right side of the screen, um, showing how we ask those questions. We ask how often the respondent or their household members parked in the street overnight. Um, how often, um, the respondent parks in the street overnight? So looking at the household versus the individual respondent, and then how often they had visitors parking overnight. As part of the survey, there are also a couple of opportun- opportunities to provide, um, written comments, and we received more than 900 of those. Um, these are the general themes that came out of those comments. I did not categorize all 900 of these comments. AI did this for me for, uh, disclosure. But, um, read through the comments and then had AI helped, uh, helped categorize these. Parking capacity was more than half of the comments with, basically, we don't have enough driveway space in some, in some way. Uh, concerns about, uh, where visitors might park and where people might park during events. Uh, safety concerns were certainly in there. Um, both the, I'm afraid an ambulance can't get down my street, but also we saw, saw a lot of, people will be driving when they shouldn't. And that was generally related to, uh, concerns for potentially drunk driving, asking people to leave, um, in the evenings. Equity and fairness, um, that this was an ordinance that would be targeting, uh, students or renters. Uh, general rights or property rights that, uh, folks feel like they should be able to park in front of their home. And, uh, comments related to enforcement, uh, basically saying this is going to be very difficult to enforce. All right, this is my last slide. Uh, I'll leave this up for, uh, any discussion you all choose to have tonight on this, um, on this item. Um, there are some things for consideration if you would like to have a discussion, and we're wanting to know where to start. Could talk about ordinance parameters, the area it might apply to, the time, uh, timing of when an ordinance could go into effect, how much it may cost, how we may enforce that. All things we can discuss and questions that, um, I could help answer. Again, tonight is an opportunity to receive this information. You have the survey results, um, and to hold a public hearing. Uh, you may choose to discuss amongst the council if you would like. But this item is not scheduled for action, and we will bring this item back for possible action on the first meeting in November.
Okay, council members, I've got three people who would like to speak to us. But if you have a question for clarification, rather than discussion points, you want to ask that of staff now? Anybody have a question for clarification? Okay. Mr. Yancy, question before discussion, we'll have, have discussion later.
Why couldn't we just make this simply based on street width?
We can, and that is, um, something we do now on a street-by-street basis. If there are public safety concerns, which often, uh, result from, um, uh, from smaller street widths, then we bring those forward for street-by-street removal. So that is an opportunity.
Do we have a written and stone rule now that if a street is not wider than blank, we do not park on one side of it or on it at all?
No, we don't have a standard like that, but I think oftentimes if you get below the standard, which is a seven, a 27-foot wide street, then it gets then it gets real tight. Because if you have parking on both sides, vehicle parking area each about nine feet wide or so, you've got just enough room for a fire truck to get through, but if they stop there, they can't open their doors.
We have a map of the city or analytics data regarding what the, how many miles of street are this wide? How many wa- miles of street are this wide?
Certainly something we can get. We have a lot of that data specifically for the Southside area. We don't have a lot of substandard streets in College Station. If you're looking for where the majority of them lie, it would be Southside.
Thank you very much.
Can you pull that slide back up just? You had one that had the street widths on it.
Did I?
You did. It was color-coded.
Uh, this is parking removal. That's the color-coded. That's where parking has been removed.
It still has the widths on it.
Oh, it does. Yes, less than twenty-four feet for the red areas. And you can see where, if you can see those dash lines, that is where the parking is removed. And so, you can see there if it's removed on both sides or on one side.
Okay, so we do have that, that map in front of us.
And that is a very small section of Southside, but it was meant to be an example that there is parking removed in, on a number of streets, at least one side of the street, in the Southside area.
But you also have twenty-seven-foot wide streets where you don't have it on either side, right?
Yes.
What drove that? How did, how did that come to be?
Um, there are some areas, specifically in the Southside, where parking was removed years ago because it was being used for, like, studer, student commuter parking, for folks to park and walk over to the university. And residents asked the city to take a look at that, and parking was removed. Lee and Pershing, I think, have limited parking or parking limitations in some way related to that specifically.
So, right now, we have kind of a custom map based on citizen advocacy married with public safety.
Yes. The majority of parking when removed in College Station, even historically, has been for public safety. We have a couple of instances that tied back to advocacy.
Could I move on then to the other speakers? Or do you have more, you, you have more information?
I just have one more question.
Go ahead.
So, we have a number of limited parking or no parking ci- uh,
Yes.
areas in Southside. How is enforcement with that? Or is it generally compliant? Or are we seeing spikes and issues?
The, um, we certainly get calls related to needed enforcement in the area in which we go through there. Both code enforcement and the police department are able to issue tickets for violations when they see them on the on-street parking. Our code enforcement does the parking in the yard and, and those types of violations. There are, our code officers are assigned areas, and so, we do have an officer that is responsible for these areas and does drive through them often. Certainly keeping a lookout for that, as well as for other code violations. We don't have a high number of citations. Talking with Chief Mann earlier this evening, I think we've issued thirty or so citations in, in the two areas since the beginning of August. So, that is three months and thirty citations, so it's not a heavy amount. I think it would be anecdotal to say, "How many more violations are there out there where they have not been ticketed?"
Okay, I have three people signed up to speak. If, Ms. Prohaska, you'll stand by, I'm sure we'll have more discussion for you. Mr. Charles, Charles Elliott is up first. And be followed, and you've got three minutes each, followed by Ingrid Cuero and then Ainsley Broadwell. Welcome, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. I want to begin by saying I greatly appreciate the public meeting we had on September thirty, where the residents got caught up to speed as much as possible about the current state of affairs. I gained a great deal of more understanding of the complexity. And I, and I'm grateful to those who are, who are taking on this task. That meeting gave me a rare chance to speak with Mayor Nichols at length and Chief Mann, other officials and, and other citizens. And clearly, every person in attendance cares deeply and has their own often competing ideas about what to do. The topic is emotionally charged. And I, and I think the open meeting helped all of us who care to understand the situation better as it stands today. That said, I, I have two concerns regarding the plan for overnight parking as we go forward. First, I, I haven't seen, and I don't think there is a, what I would call a clear enumeration of the strategic goals that we want to achieve. Goals that explain what we're trying to do, they may exist. I, I looked for them at the meeting. I was hoping they were there, but I did not see them. And I think that if those goals had been there, that the public would have had more information. If we could have seen what you see and what you think the goals are, it, it probably would have changed some of those numbers up there. Because I, I couldn't vote. I didn't know. I came away not knowing. And I, and I wanted to vote. It wasn't that I was being apathetic. I just didn't know what to do. And so, I didn't. I didn't vote, and I don't like not voting. But to me, clear goals shouldn't be optional. They're foundational. They shape strategy, inform priorities, guide the actions necessary to achieve outcomes. Well-defined goals help eliminate unnecessary paths and help illuminate paths that matter. And I would hope that the goals already exist. And if they do, I would, I would ask to see them. Because ultimately, it's we citizens who have to live with the consequences of whatever decision our leaders make. The bottom line for me is this. I'd like to see someone enumerate the goals with regard to these key areas. Safety and emergency access in detail, goals in detail. Residential equity, traffic and congestion management, environmental and urban maintenance, transparency and accessibility, and fiscal responsibility.
Yeah, your time is up, but I think you've given us a good, a good summary to think about. Thank you very much. And I do have some answers for you, but we'll, we'll get to that in the discussion. Ingrid Cuero. And be followed by Ainsley Broadwell. Good evening.
Good evening. Ingrid Cuero, College Station, Southside. Mayor and City Council Members, I ask that you vote no to enacting overnight parking restrictions near campus. Being born and raised in College Station, I have benefited from the current parking ordinances. Residents, including myself, host celebrations and get-togethers at our homes and apartments on any given day of the week. Parking ordinances would only hinder the ability to host them. In the situation of someone staying the night, if an overnight ordinance between the hours of two and five AM were to be enacted, would my family member have to wake about one-thirty AM to remove his/her vehicle to comply with the law? And if that is the case, where would he or she have to move it? And if the purpose is to prevent such a family member from bringing a vehicle, then it would be an additional hassle on me to pick up and drop off this individual just to comply with the law. I bring all this up to say that this ordinance would cause more harm to the community than good. Live very close to Texas A&amp;M University, and that comes with more people living in the community, whether resident or student. I can see the convenience in being able to drive through my or another person's street without cars being to the left or to my right. But I would forfeit that convenience to remain having the freedom to park on and to have family members park on the street that I live in. And with that, I ask that you vote no to enacting overnight parking restrictions near campus. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ainsley, Ainsley Broadwell. Good evening. I see you're sitting in the audience tonight, not up here.
Yes, sir. Thank you all so much for having me. For the, those of y'all that I have not had the honor to meet, my name is Ainsley Broadwell. I am serving as the Vice President of Municipal Affairs over College Station for the Texas A&amp;M Student Government Association. I thank you all for the opportunity to speak on the proposed parking restrictions. The student government shares your priorities of public safety, neighborhood, quality of life, and traffic flow. Texas A&amp;M students are residents of this community, and we have a vested interest in maintaining safe and accessible neighborhoods. Recently, we partnered with Student Affairs to survey off-campus students about their parking experience. We received three hundred and sixty responses from students across College Station and Bryan. I'd like to share a few key findings. First of all, twenty-nine percent of our respondents were unsure whether city ordinances affected their parking, especially in Northgate. That's a pretty significant gap. Second, seventy percent of students said parking access doesn't match their housing occupancy. Many four-bedroom homes only have three places in their driveway, forcing students to park in the street. We recommend exploring zoning changes that encourage a one-to-one ratio of bedrooms to parking spots. This practice would ease street parking demand without penalizing the current residents. Regarding overnight restrictions, we support targeted limits where documented safety or access issues exist, especially near elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, or places where the street widths are not in compliance. We also asked the council to consider the financial impact. Twenty-two percent of our respondents already pay for parking. Over half of those said that creates a significant financial strain on them. Finally, student government is committed to helping. We'll work with off-campus student services, promote responsible parking, neighborhood courtesy, and awareness of alternative transportation options. Texas A&amp;M and College Station share a strong partnership. Our students are your neighbors, your employees, and your volunteers. We're not asking the council to ignore safety concerns, only to address them strategically and collaboratively, recognizing students as partners and creating safe, livable neighborhoods. And I thank you all for your consideration.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Broadwell. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
May I ask her a question?
And you may ask her a question. Yes.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your well-thought-out comments. Being involved in student government, you know government's all about challenging or awkward questions sometimes. I have one for you, so I apologize in advance.
I welcome it.
You guys, as students, were very successful at lobbying the state government. And while I didn't agree with what you did or the policy, I do log y'all's efforts in getting it over the finish line. But packaged in the debate leading up to Senate Bill fifteen-sixty-seven, you guys told us, and you testified before the legislature, that students wanted, for public safety purposes, for trash cans left-out purposes, for parking purposes, that you guys wanted the behaviors regulated. Now that we're trying to regulate one of those behaviors, y'all have turned out in force, and you don't want us to. So, how am I, as one member of council, to interpret how all this has played out?
Yes, sir. I understand everybody's hesitations with that. And we, first and foremost, want, want to work with the city and with residents. So, we are here, we're showing up, and we want to continue that collaboration. I understand how that came across, maybe negatively, and has impacted the relationship, but I do want to repair that. And yes, we did advocate for those safety standards. I think street widths in, in proximity to schools is a safety standard. I would be happy to collaborate and poll street widths. I can speak specifically from where I live. There is a street, and it's really wide. It's Luther Street in Southside. I can't speak specifically because I have not done the exact research, but I would say that is over the twenty-seven foot, and parking is blocked on one side. So, we are a proponent, and we think street widths would be a solution. And it's a safety standard like we lobbied for and like we, we wanted, truly.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Appreciate your presentations. Ms. Prohaska, if you could come back up here. What, what we're going to do now, and again, no decisions to be made tonight, but I'm going to ask council members to provide some thoughts and discussion. But I'd like to ask them to kind of address the key questions as directly as they can and as briefly as they can. I think the number one question they need to be able to comment on is the overnight parking, which is what drove the original discussions several months ago. And that's what you were asked to kind of include in this public engagement process. I think, from my own perspective, is I don't, I don't see that as being a solution anymore. I do think, however, we should be addressing any additional areas that need either street, either parking removal entirely, because the street's too narrow, and it's, and it is a, a safety or service quality consideration. But otherwise, I think beyond that, additional inten- attention, I know the city manager will comment on this in a minute, to code enforcement focused specifically on some of those illegal behaviors you showed in, in photographs. You said only thirty or forty, uh, street parking violations had been, or total violations, I guess, in the last couple of months.
Out, outside of game days. Game days, there were far, far more violations.
All bets are off on game days. That's a whole, whole different enforcement consideration, I'm sure. Anyway, that, that's sort of how I would, would like our, our council members to respond. So, I'm going to start and place one down here with Mr. Smith, and just ask him if he has any discussion points he'd like to leave. There is no decision to be made tonight.
Sure, no decisions. Thank you, Mayor. I do think that we need to address the impacts that over occupancy caused to neighborhoods. And one of the things that over occupancy causes is parking that cannot be made, cannot happen on the site. And the city shouldn't be obligated to provide a parking space on the street for the residents that live in a, in a house or, or, in a property. And, and I think that there is some, I, and I think there's some feeling of entitlement that, "I, I live here. I ought to be able to park in front." And that's a city street. It's not a private street. So, and I think for public safety reasons, we have been and should continue to remove parking where, where it's a problem. I also think that if we, I, I am in favor of the nighttime prohibition because what, what happens is the, the available parking that's there gets, gets taken. And so, it's not available. And it needs to be some kind of forced turnover. And so, I think that that overnight parking restriction would accomplish that.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr., yeah, Wright.
Correct.
I'm getting it straight.
I agree with the overall sentiments of what Mark was saying. Can you go back to the map with the colored dots? So, I think it's very interesting. Clear, you know, clearly, that center, I mean, we're just talking about really in the heart there. I think those are probably also the narrowest, some of the more narrow streets. I don't, I'm not going to make you go back and forth, but I, I think that if we're going to go after this and start to remove parking, street by street, focusing on that center, that center seems to be the worst. Anecdotally, driving around, the center is the worst, too. It's just, it's really hard to get around down there on a non-game day, just driving, just driving through that area. Some already have restricted parking on one side. And then, so, if, by any direction here, it is to start identifying that area. And then if the, if the, where those green dots are, if they correlate with narrower streets, then come back with a sort of criteria based off of the, uh, size of the streets as to how we want to tackle it in terms of restricting overnight parking. I think the three to six AM is good. I do, I, I sympathize with the idea of i- i- it can be more dangerous because you are forcing these folks to drive. But at the same time, I mean, there's, I mean, but at the same time, I mean, there's, I mean, it's, it's personal responsibility, too. Like, I can't hold everybody's hand here. And as it starts to change, folks will accommodate. Everyone has always accommodated. A lot of these streets already have restricted parking. Um, not sure if you need any other questions answered that I haven't answered.
This, this item is for y'all to hear from the public and discuss if you would like to, so there's no expectation on my end.
I think, I think I gave my general gist of what I, how I'm feeling about this as of right now.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I want to applaud staff for having these public forums. You mentioned, you know, the response that you've gotten from the surveys. That's outstanding. I, uh, I'm glad that the citizens have come out and, and, uh, and shared their, their thoughts. Um, before I get to my comments, let me ask you a question. Um, if I remember correctly, I think you mentioned that in East Gate, there were some op, there were some times when there was towing. That's some, some, did, did I not hear that correctly? So we don't tow for violations of parking, do we?
We do, uh, specifically on game days for gross violations, blocking intersections, those types of things.
Walk through that process for me. How, how, if, if, if I see a violation, do I call the city and indicate somebody's parking? I mean, how does somebody get their car towed for a parking violation?
Well, and again, that's game days.
Okay, sure.
So game days, we have, uh, tow trucks on standby. So we're trying to get those violations that are true safety hazards out of the way very quickly. So you've got, uh, tow trucks around there, and it's the staff that's working, uh, PD, code enforcement, uh, during those times to get those violations taken care of.
Code enforcement contacts the tow company, and then they do it. So the tow, the tow company can't just say there's a violation. There has to be some type of complaint or...
That's a great question. I don't know the answer to.
Yep. Primarily on those, the code officer identifies that on game day, they're out there working already. Those vehicles that are blocking intersections, as Jennifer said, or blocking people's driveways and different things like that, they see those violations, and then they'll contact PD to come over and verify the tow, and then they'll tow the vehicle.
Great. So, so some city official is contacting them to do that. Um... In any of your discussions and, and the forums, was there paid parking? Was that discussed, uh, at all? And what was the, what was the outcome of that?
Uh, we did not discuss that as a potential option, because that's not the direction we got from council. Um, did have a couple of people mention it in passing as we were talking at the public meeting, uh, more as a question, if that's something we were looking at. Did have one individual that I talked to personally say, um, "I don't like the no overnight parking. I'd rather the paid parking program," which wasn't on the table. So I think we're kind of looking back to the, the special events that we had done, uh, a year or so ago.
Yeah. So Mr. Smith mentioned over occupancy, because that's ultimately the, the, the premise of why we started this discussion. Was there a correlation? Did the, did the citizens think that this, you know, reducing the overnight parking or, or eliminating the overnight parking, would that be a solution to that problem?
Um, it, it does not address occupancy, and it does not address who can, who can live with who. Um, it can affect the number of vehicles that you could have related to, um, the home. So if you only had port, four parking spaces available, you could only have four vehicles. You could still have eight people living there, but just four vehicles. Um, if you had a larger lot with more parking, let's say you had room for ten parking spaces, well, then, from a market standpoint, you could rent ten people that had vehicles. Um, these are areas that are in close proximity to the university. Not everybody has a vehicle with him. Um, certainly, people utilize, um, alternative modes of transportation. But I think generally speaking, we know that, um, most folks have a vehicle with him here at, at college. So it is not, um, a way to try to limit the number of people in the home. It is a way to try to decongest the streets. And we see a lot of vehicles on the streets because we have a lot of people living in the neighborhood.
And, and, and could a, 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 a policy be, and I think Mr. Ainsley mentioned it, the, the width of the street? I mean, can, can we use that as our basis of how we kind of enforce this, this parking issue?
Yes.
So that, that would be an option that would be, be equitable in all the neighborhoods, right? Especially East Gate and Southside.
Yes, there are always going to be extenuating circumstances. There may be the curvature of the road or, um, other circumstances, right? The density of the housing, the spacing of the driveways, whatever it is. And so it won't just always be street width, but that could absolutely be a marker for looking and seeing if there are safety concerns on a street.
Thank you very much. Very informative.
Let me just follow up. Are you thinking about that in terms of guiding the decision about whether there's a prohibition against overnight mark, parking on certain sizes of streets? Or are you just thinking in general, as we already have here, restrictions on one side of the street anyway?
I was making...
Which, which is overnight, it's permanent, it's, it's year-round.
Yeah, I was, I was kind of making the prohibition of overnight parking, so that kind of being the, the basis of why we would, would not have that.
Okay, okay. I just want to clarify. Thank you. I did have a question, uh, before we move on to discussion, uh, for Ms. Prohaska. There were, one of the speakers said something about a, uh, parking space to bedroom, uh, parity. Don't we require that in new builds?
We do. So in the Southside and East Gate areas, if somebody builds a home, it is a one-to-one requirement already. So any of the newer, larger homes, uh, build a one-to-one. Um, where you probably don't see that is if you have a, uh, or you may not have it, is if you have an older home with a smaller or, uh, single-car-width driveway.
Right, and, uh, and that one-to-one ratio can be, can be, um, met by having one car in front of another if the driveway is deep enough, which is inconvenient for the residents, which then tends to encourage some of the residents to park on the street because they don't want to have to get up early in the morning to move a car around or whatever, right?
It may, and that's...
The parity thing doesn't always work.
Right, and that's what we see, um, in all of our neighborhoods. Um, where we've got, uh, folks that stack, and many of our new neighborhoods or newer neighborhoods, those HOAs do not allow parking overnight on the streets. And so you will see people stacking and trying to figure out who needs to move a vehicle to let the other person out.
These are not renter neighborhoods. These are, are new homes on small lots. Yeah, right. Okay, uh, let me move on to, um, Ms. McLean.
First of all, thank you, Ainsley. That was a very, um, I think, wise and judicious way to look at things, and that's actually how I look at things. Going back to your comments, Mr. Elliott, um, public safety is our primary concern, my primary concern. And I think that making sure that we have adequate access for our emergency vehicles, um, is paramount. I think that that is a key element of neighborhood integrity. Uh, if your services can't get to you, whether it be mail, trash, um, or, or emergency services, I think that we failed you in some way. Um, for that, I would very much support just eliminating parking on street for streets that are twenty-seven feet or less than width, um, if that's the magic number at which fire trucks can get through. Um, I know on game days, uh, in talking to some, some of the students here, that, um, they were, and this is not all, but I talked to a couple that felt pretty strongly that, uh, allowing parking on game days created a bigger problem, because that was when you had more pedestrians out. And, uh, it created issues that were not necessarily there, um, during the week. So I, I don't know that overnight's the way to go, but I think if we, um, look at it, and I, and I could be convinced, I'm not anti-that, but I think looking at it strictly from a street width, let's just make our streets safe and make them accessible, um, to, to all folk, folks. And again, I, I really appreciate the feedback that we've been getting from A&amp;M, and I think Ainsley's doing a really good job of, of trying to bridge, uh, bridge the gap between, um, us old locals and our, our young, uh, student body. So thank you.
Mr. Ainsley.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this, uh, this one's just a sticky wicket. And I, I feel like what we do, we need to be consistent. Um, I don't see any problem with starting out with a test program in these acutely affected areas, but I think ultimately it would need to be some sort of policy that were adhered to citywide. Um, I worry about the guy with the carpet cleaning van, and his wife has a car, and he's got a car, and, well, you know, where, where, where does he park? Um, I worry about the students that are following the rules. Um, coordinate schedules with roommates, if at all possible. Spend the time at the MSC, an hour at the MSC, and stay there, and then go to your next class before you go. All of those things that, you know, people that are trying to get on with their lives, be good citizens, and follow the rules. Um, I think we need to be careful, um, that we don't use these policies as de facto ways to get at, uh, occupancy, even though occupancy is what's giving rise to the problem, over occupancy, I should say. Um, I think Mayor, so you said it months ago, Mayor, that at some point we, we have to try something to achieve our policy goals. And if it doesn't work out, we hit the pause or the rewind button. I think that's probably what this is gonna come down to, because I'll be darned if I can predict the impact that what we're about to do here is gonna have on these neighborhoods. Uh, esteemed colleague Smith made some really good comments. At the end of the day, it's not those home streets, it's the city streets. Um, I know I'm opining a lot, a lot, but not giving a lot of conclusions, because this one, we, we just thought baseball was a logistical challenge. This one has a chance to be much more so. That's all I've got right now, Mayor.
And, and we can look at some potential for policies for consideration, because when you mentioned consistency, we do, in new neighborhoods, um, require them to do something different with parking. Either you have to build wider streets or narrower streets with no parking but parking elsewhere, or you have to remove parking on one side of the road. So we realize that this is an issue moving forward with new neighborhoods, and they have to build their subdivisions different. And so these areas close to campus allow parking on both sides, and so you do get the, the pinch.
CSAN put together a, a, a policy, uh, very well thought out. They spent a lot of time on it as a group. Uh, seemed to make a lot of sense to me, which is why I asked the questions about street width, like the, with the whole thing being driven by street width, uh, at least as one potential solution. Are staff in possession of the CSAN proposed parking policy?
I do believe I have that.
Okay. And are y'all baking that into the cake of what you're gonna bring back to us in two weeks, or...
Yeah, we can bring back whatever information you guys need to make a decision, um, or not, in two weeks. Um, the, we didn't have a preconceived idea of what the discussion may be and what we'd need to bring back. But if that's something you'd like us to, to consider, we can bring that back in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
I'm not sure you even have a post-conception of what this discussion has been, but let me just add a couple more thoughts. It isn't, it's a street width that's just the entire, uh, thing, and as you mentioned earlier, curvature and some other things. But this area is an area without sidewalks. So you don't have sidewalks. One route through here, I think, is a bicycle route, not a bicycle lane. Is that Fairview or...
It is Fairview.
Fairview. And so you got a bicycle route, and you have no sidewalks. And it seems to me that, uh, you can't just say street width is all, all-powerful in this decision framework. Uh, and it complicates things quite a bit in this older neighborhood. I, uh, so I want, I want people to, um, I want to think about that a little bit, that, that, uh, the width of the street is not the exact criteria you would use.
Why not? I'm trying to understand why. Why, why not? Why is that a bad criteria?
Because if you take a look, if you stand over there at the intersection, uh, Fairview, and, uh, and, and the middle of the morning, middle of the afternoon, you see a number of people walking in the street, walking their dogs in the street, riding bicycles and, and, uh, other, um, motorized vehicles in the street, not just cars. I think you got a big safety issue. I'm not, I don't even know, I don't know what this means in terms of a conclusion, because frankly, in a lot of these areas, we're already eliminated one-side parking. We only have one side. You don't have that up here at the moment, but you only have one-sided street parking. So I, I, I think, um, a, a more, uh, aggressive, um, code enforcement is needed, uh, whatever that costs, however that's done. Uh, I just am not any longer ready to pull the trigger as, uh, Mr. Ainsley suggested I might have been a few months ago. Let's try something and see if it works. I'm not sure I would try the overnight parking, uh, ban unless it was in a very few selected areas where you really could see. I mean, that would be a ban on both sides of the street, because you're already banning overnight parking on one side of the street, right? I mean, it's twenty-four seven. You can't park on one side of the street.
On, on those streets with parking removed, yes.
Right, the parking's removed on one side of the street, so that's twenty-four hours, so they only got one side to park on. Uh, I think I would examine to see if there are a few other areas, uh, in, in Southside, and in fact, in East Gate, where, um, a city initiated consideration, not just a, uh, resident-initiated, uh, discussion of removing parking from one side. Um, would make sense as an extension. Um, I would take issue with Mr. Smith's comments about, uh, the fact that if you did overnight parking, you'd somehow, uh, cause the cars to move around. But that, but that, uh, is, I don't know that that's a problem anyway. Nobody has told, told me that there's a problem with cars parking permanently on the street. If, if that's a problem, that's a different kind of an issue, that somebody parks a car there for two months and never moves it. Now, if that's an issue, then I really want to know more about that. Maybe that's a question I don't know enough about, if, if that's a concern, because they are, uh, holding up, occupying a space. Um, but I guess just, um, certainly adopting a, a ban on overnight parking, or even three hours, would certainly disturb those cars for a lot, and they'd have to go somewhere.
The, the over occupancy creates a demand for the parking space, and...
If over occupancy is, is changed from last year, I would agree with you. Right now, I don't know that that's the case. I would say two or three years from now, who knows? Um, if you see more tear downs and building eight-bedroom structures, which we can't stop, although I think we can through our...
But they have to have eight parking spots if they build...
I agree they would, but they put, they stack four in front of four, and what do you got? You got, you got two lanes of four, uh, along the side of the house. They call those parking spaces. They, they aren't gonna use them. Anyway, I, I still, I think that's an overdone solution to this. I think it's a needed, I think it's needed that they gotta have one per bedroom, but, uh, and we certainly haven't even talked about, uh, uh, permeable surface in the area, which is, uh, which is set already at, what's the percentage?
We, we do limit, I don't know off the top of my head, fifty, fifty-five percent, fifty-five percent?
Of permeable.
Of impervious service, maximums.
So you can go a little over half of the lot, impervious with sidewalks, building, foundation,
Correct.
covered areas, and parking lot, parking spaces. And you don't allow, uh, crushed stone, gravel. It's gotta be paved.
That's a paved parking space.
Paved parking space. Anyway, that, that, I, I'm just not as, as excited about overnight parking ban as I might have been a month or two ago. I, I, I would certainly ask for more information on code enforcement's, uh, recent findings. Uh, are they, are they finding now that, if in fact, over occupancy is an issue, then there must be more cars there. They must be struggling to find spaces on the street even more than they were a year ago. But a year ago, the same issues were there. And, uh, even with our, our restrictions on occupancy that we had in place at that time. So anyway, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm no better than Mr. Ainsley at telling you what, what, what the, the real framework should be, but I do have some strong reservations about banning overnight parking, because I just think it's a... overnight parking because I just think it's a nightmare to enforce and I just don't, I don't think that I, I don't think I personally want to go there because I don't, I don't think it's just the renters, I think it's also permanent residents that got questions too. That's why they've asked about, and it was in one of your slides, a permit system, not paid parking, but some people said they would like to see a permit system where, which I do see in, in, in cities quite frequently, in neighborhoods that are very dense.
We do, and typically the intent of a permit system in those areas is to ensure on-street parking for the folks that live in the area because the on-street parking is being taken up by people that don't live or visit the area. So, for instance, if our issue here was daytime parking because everybody parked in the neighborhood to go to class and nobody that lived in the neighborhood could get a parking space, that's when you'd want to look at a permit system. When it's the folks that live in the neighborhood that are causing the excess parking, a permit system does not work.
Well, what's your assessment of, of those two with us? Is it 60, 40, one or the other, 80, 20? Which is it?
So, I think that we, and this is anecdotal, I think that we used to see more parking in the neighborhood for people to walk over to campus than we see today because the campus has far more parking available than it used to. 20, 30, 40 years ago, it was a real trick to find a parking space on campus to get to class. Today, they're available, you just pay for them.
And just to follow up, if, you know, not getting into the percentage, but if you thought that people were coming just in the daytime to use it, that was your main problem, then you wouldn't pursue an overnight parking ban because it wouldn't affect them. So, the overnight parking is meant to deal with the abundance of cars being caused by people who are permanently in the area or they are coming and spending the night for some reason.
I have a question. Could you go back to the street width dots? Go back one more. So, you said Fairview is the one that is predominantly used heavily?
It is on our mapping system, a, a primary route for bicycles. It is a bike route.
So, that's got a 37 foot width on it?
It's a collector roadway.
So...
Normal collector roadways in the city do not have parking on them because they have bike lanes on them. So, we remove parking from collectors in College Station generally. These areas, older areas, don't follow all the same rules that the new development has.
Well, in part, maybe they should. You know, if, if we've got 37 feet there, why not put in a shared use path?
And it's a 27.
Okay, the slide at the very southwest, it says 37.
Okay.
37, Fairview is 37.
Oh, Fairview is.
It's over 27, 27 or over.
I mean, we've got 10, I mean, could we do a dedicated pedestrian or bike, something on Fairview and just like I said, remove the onsite park, you know, on-street parking?
We can look at options. One of the things that is tricky in these older neighborhoods is they do not have storm sewer systems, so they do utilize the bar ditches along the, the roadway, but can always look at potential solutions.
Always something. And then, is Linda still here?
Yeah, she's right there.
She is.
She sits right where I can't see her.
You're being called.
That's a woman, Harville.
You want to talk to her?
No, I was just going to point out, she does a really interesting play-by-play of the events that happened in her neighborhood on game days.
Including the dip.
No, I, yeah, it really could be a reality show, the, you know, because I can just, she tells it so well and you could, so I mean, there, there's a lot going on over there and I think we need to honor the, these narrow street widths. Chief Mann, do you have problems getting in and out of, is 27 feet kind of the magic number or what do you need? And then, Ms. Fisher, you know, like the garbage trucks, is that a, you know, how, are y'all getting weekly calls, daily calls? Is that a...
Yeah, access is definitely an issue for us, so fire trucks from tire to tire are 102 inches wide, mirror to mirror, which we really need to make sure we have a clear path, are about 114 inches wide. But then, once we stop, we need to get the doors open, so we're looking at 120 inches or so, so 10 feet basically that we need. So, that, that is for us to, to stop, open doors, get out and, and operate, so we need at least 10 foot. I appreciate the, the discussion about fire trucks, but you know, as, as you just mentioned, you know, our sanitation trucks are just as big and also have to make access down there. And while we talked about overnight parking, and that was kind of the, the gist of this, emergencies happen all the time, so regardless of whether it's day or night, we need to have access to those areas.
And with the trash trucks, I mean, how, because I know this is also one of Ms. Harville's observations as she's watching live through her window, you know, trash trucks not being able to get through, what happens if someone's can isn't picked up? Do y'all circle back around? I mean, how much?
We try to make contact if it's, if it's an issue or get code involved to help us access the, the trash can.
So, typically it would still get picked up, it's just taking up city resources, trying to make the...
We, we try. There are some times we just can't get to it, but we make every attempt we can to, to collect.
And y'all's use, y'all's width is comparable to the...
Yes, pretty much. What a fire, and we have difficulty in Southside and other neighborhoods because of the, the width of the street.
But you guys need to be on one side or the other, not necessarily running in the middle of the street, so...
Correct, yeah, if they're collecting from the side, yes.
But it could be an issue, you just can't, it's behind a car. Cars parked in front of the trash can, it isn't just a matter of which street.
Yes, if the trash can's blocked, we don't, we don't pick it up and we, yeah.
But that, that affects quality of service, which is one of the things you were talking about.
Right? Okay, yeah, I, to your point, Fairview is not, is needed, seems like the street width's not restrictive enough, but I mean, if we've got 37 feet, it almost seems like we could get a pedestrian or, you know, a shared use path or something of that nature in on Fairview or any of these other, maybe Lee Street, I don't know how you guys have them classified, but...
Mayor, one last question.
Yeah, just for you, in furtherance of Citizen Elliott's comments about us not really having a strategic goal, I think for me, listening to this discussion, it's safety and services.
Exactly.
Is that, is that our strategic goal?
To me, that, that is, but the more unintended congestion you get in that area, your service quality drops. Leaving aside this public safety, fire, ambulance side, but to me, it's as much public services as it is, as it is just that. So, again, I don't know, we've already eliminated parking on one side of the street over there, except for a few streets. I don't know what more you could do, but I do suggest that...
And again, this is a very small portion of Southside. The area we're looking at for overnight parking is four or five times this size.
Yeah, that's true, all the way down to Holloman.
Past Holloman, on the other side, closer to Southwest Parkway.
And just quickly, I mean, we're talking about this in many ways, but if the council, again, looking for a direction, whether it's for next week or in the future, if the council said, hey, we've been talking about this for certain reasons, but we have concerns about public safety, about waste collection, these type of things, services, and you wanted us to bring back, you know, staff recommendations from a operational perspective on good, better, best, then we could certainly do that. It's a little bit different than I think anything that was proposed as part of this process, but that, whereas we're not coming with anything here, we're kind of listening. If, if you directed us to say, operationally, give us your opinion, we could do that as kind of a, a different way to look at this. But, but that would take a little more time than, you know, this, it wouldn't be part of this process of two weeks from now.
Mr. Smith has a comment?
Yeah, I, I would agree with, with setting service and safety priorities and, and asking for recommendations on that.
Recommendations regarding parking removal?
Yes, yes.
That would be associated with improving quality of services.
Good, better, best. Good, better, best.
All right. Some people choose good because it's cheaper. I'll leave that alone. We don't need to go down that road. Well, that, that's certainly a reasonable approach to me. I, I, the only thing I'm, I'm strong about is I don't think this is the time to adopt an overnight parking ban anywhere because I don't think we know enough about where we're at. So...
So, I would also say that the council, it, it can direct us not to bring another item back for action. So, that, just as you're talking about it, I mean, we either need direction on what to bring you back or direction that we're not bringing this back.
I would like to see it come back from a safety and service perspective.
I, I would agree, but Jennifer, do we have a problem? Do we have a parking problem? Because as Mr. Smith said at the very initial, this all came about from over occupancy. Do we have a parking issue?
This, talking about parking solutions came about from residents in the areas asking the city to address their parking problems.
Yes. Do you think there was a correlation of over occupancy?
I think that there are far more vehicles parked in the neighborhoods than there have been in the past.
And far more than the houses that are built there are meant to have vehicles. So, if you have a three-bedroom home, a lot of these homes were built back in the 30s and 40s and they may have two legal bedrooms with a third living room that's converted, but the infrastructure in the neighborhood, as someone who deals with it regularly on the contractor's side, it is not built to sustain the level of occupancy that's in the neighborhood. So, there are these ancillary issues that pop up and parking's one of them. There are others that we, I'm sure we'll be discussing, but over occupancy is an issue, whether it's students or anyone else living there, we, we just need to upgrade our infrastructure and ordinances to accommodate.
I, I 100% agree. I totally agree with that. My, my question is, are we getting complaints?
Yes.
Okay, so we, we do have the data that there are complaints.
Well, we don't, we don't log phone call complaints or kind of conversations with residents.
But doesn't code enforcement have that information?
Code enforcement does. If they basically... If somebody calls code enforcement with that complaint, yes, they have that information.
What I'd like to see is, I, I, I do think we need to get a little more information back along the lines of what City Manager said, suggested from a quality of service and public safety point of view. Bring us back ideas, options, whatever you want to call it. But I would, I would also, I would, I would certainly think we need to, on a regular basis, do, if, if code enforcement is not catching everything that needs to be caught there, we need to rethink this code enforcement in this area. Now, I know that's going to cost money, I know that's what you're going to tell me, that's okay. But that and I think simply taking a look at the, at the areas that have the most difficult problems from a safety or, or service quality point of view and just going, adding more one side of the street parking bans is fine with me as a place to start. I just don't think I want to go as all the way to overnight parking bans at this time, that's all.
Mayor, one last question, I promise. We just did, or we're doing now, a neighborhood infrastructure renovation. I believe it's wastewater. I'm drawing a blank on which one.
McCullough neighborhood?
Yes, thank you. Since we're talking about how old Southgate is and we're getting ready to do a bunch of stuff or are doing a bunch of stuff in Eastgate already, is, is this up for a master plan from a transpo perspective, a transportation, pardon my military lingo, came out? From a transportation perspective, when does Southside get some TLC?
On specific road maintenance or...
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think in overarching strategic sense, I'm hearing that the roadways over there are inadequate.
Well, and I'll say too, we did do a neighborhood plan in the Southside area, as we have in lots of areas, where we got extensive community input from residents and property owners and the input we got at that time was that they did not want their streets brought up to a standard width. And part of the reason for that was the trees, so...
But to just dovetail into the McCullough, we have done some water wastewater projects in Southside, so there, there, I mean, there will be more over time, but that is one thing that drove, there was kind of an alignment in McCullough because there were water wastewater and then we did also roadway projects as well, so, and Jennifer explained the, the other side of it, but as there are projects in the city, whether they're Eastgate like we're seeing over here now or, or at some point in Southside, then certainly there are conversations if you have to tear the road up anyways, but the feedback to this point has been, you know, we're not going to go in and do anything to the geometry of it, so...
And let me just say, this has been a pretty well discussed topic. What I heard at least from three or four, four people was that they would like to see us, see you come back with a little more clarity on the...
Operational.
Operational side, what, what does it mean in terms of service quality from our city services, delivery and all that, but also think about the service quality from other vendors that drive, have to drive these streets, whether they're washing machine repairmen, plumbers, electricians, the, the Amazon people, UPS, postal service, all of them are providing services in these neighborhoods too and they have to drive through these streets. So, I think it ought to be, we ought to be thinking about how this impacts them as well.
Okay.
Okay? Is that okay? Seeing no, nobody objecting, let's move on. Thank you very much. The next item is 8.3. Does anybody need a break at this point? Would you like a break? Get to, get to your workshop, that's the word. If somebody needs to excuse themselves, they can do that and I might do that myself. 8.3, Mr. Woods. Presentation, discussion, possible action regarding the Veterans Park Baseball Field Project, potential baseball fields and midtown area and other capital projects. Mr. Woods, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, and don't worry about breaks, we're out of here in 30 minutes, I think, so no problem. Okay, I, I don't think mine will take very long.
Okay.
But I want to lay a few things out here. So, we have this item on, it's kind of a general item and it is more for the council's information and discussion, given that we've got a lot of different things going on, but it does specifically tie into item 9.5 later, later on the agenda, which is the construction manager at risk project related to construction at Veterans and baseball field. So, that's kind of the, the impetus to this, but we wanted an item that would allow us to have a larger, more wide-ranging discussion, given that that item at the time was part of an ongoing effort where we were looking at baseball fields at Veterans and of course, that's now expanded. So, I'm going to go through a couple of things and then I'll just open it up. If council has questions of me or any other staff member, we don't necessarily need any direction on this item, but we'll go through it. So, as council knows, we had a presentation from a group about potentially doing baseball fields at Midtown. We're currently working with those folks with the goal of coming back next meeting and providing an update on where we are, what the potential ins and outs of that deal would look like, timelines and other information, as well as getting feedback from you on whether you want to move forward with it or if you want to, if you do want to move forward with it, you know, what would be the manner of, of procurement, how are we going to go about that, what the options are there. So, why is that important? Because in the last meeting when we discussed baseball fields, obviously we are currently on a parallel track and have been developing baseball fields at Veterans and now we are looking at projects in Midtown. So, as part of that site, a development project in Veterans for those three fields, there is a construction manager at risk and a design team and we have a package that has come forward, which is the site work and tributary work. So, big drainage work, I won't go into all the details there, that needs to go on, on that site in order to accommodate what was being planned, which was the three, three baseball fields. Again, contracts on, on 9.4 between three and a half and four and a half million if that were to go for it. So, the big point of discussion for this item and then ultimately that item is what direction does council give us as it relates to that item because it is a significant amount of money. The key point is that if, because of the timeline, we delay starting that item or choose not to go with that item, then it interrupts the critical path and will jeopardize the potential opening of the baseball park in 27 at Veterans. Now, obviously council could consider whether or not they're going to do ball fields at Veterans or they're going to do them at Midtown. In any scenario, we're working with our partners to try to do the best we can to have an opportunity for there to be a field open in 27 or provide some kind of alternative. There will obviously be infrastructure costs at both sites. I won't get into the specifics of costs, but I would say in general, depending on the way we go, if it were to be at Veterans or at Midtown, similar costs for the development of fields. And obviously, if you developed fields at both, there would be additional costs, significant additional costs. And then there are infrastructure costs at both sites. We have infrastructure... We have infrastructure costs at our Midtown Business Park, we have always had. We currently have about $9.7 million set aside from land sales, and I'll bring that up because sometimes people don't know that, one, we dispose of a lot of land and take income from it, and then we've set that money aside for potential infrastructure improvements over in, in the Midtown area. The item that's on the agenda tonight on Veterans Park, again, three and a half to four and a half million, depending on what part of it you do, if you were going to develop that site eventually, whether it be for baseball fields at Veterans Park or you're going to do something else, then obviously that would be site infrastructure costs there. So a couple of just quick numbers that I know I've been asked about. What have we spent at Veterans Park to this point? We've spent about a million and a half on design and, and work over there. Of that, we anticipate that if we were to move the project and it were to remain the same, basically the design of the fields, we'd recoup a little over $900,000 of it. So you'd have, you know, some half a million or so invested in the Veterans Park that you wouldn't be recouping somewhere else. Not to say that you couldn't actually recoup some of that if you built something else eventually at Veterans, softball fields or soccer fields or something like that. And then, of course, this tributary and site grading project would likely be needed if you did something over there to maximize it as well. So I'll pause there. That's a lot of kind of ins and outs and wait for questions and see if I need to or can explain anything else. Again, you're not telling me anything necessarily about 9.5, but you can certainly discuss how that relates. And we just want to have this open so you guys can kind of have a holistic discussion and make sure we inform it before you get to that item, because that item really is just based on whether or not you want to move forward with that contract.
Okay. I think the focus is on whether we can consider strategically the, the shift to Midtown or stay with the, the emphasis on Veterans Park. So who would like to speak first? Anybody?
I'll go.
Ah, Melissa, Ms. Lisa.
Ms. Lisa.
Go right ahead, Melissa. And then we'll go to Mr. Yancy and we'll come back to the other.
Teteri.
And, yeah, everybody wants to speak. Go ahead.
Um, I, I've been thinking about this a lot over the last few weeks. I know that the city had made a, a commitment, a letter of intent was signed with the Bombers, and I very much do want to partner with the Bombers. However, I feel that we have an obligation to do what's best for our citizens ahead of one letter of intent on a baseball field. I'm hoping we can pull something off for the '27 season, but I think that it's not a good idea to throw more money after sunk cost just to have something to show for it. I think that we should move our focus to Midtown, and I think we should table Veterans Park for the moment. That was always not quite as big as we wanted it. It was a less-than-ideal site for the scope of what we had determined was needed for baseball. I'm excited that we have a new opportunity in Midtown, whether we build it or work with a partner. I think Midtown's where this project needs to happen. I'm hoping that we can transfer over the design that we have, maybe pull some money out of it from a, a build perspective, but try our best to get that championship field built over in Midtown in time for the '27 season.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. And Mr. Yancy?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, lightning round. You ready? Under the Veterans Plan that we had, setting aside the fact that the Champ Field was going to cost more than the two flanking fields, we were basically looking at 10.5 to 11 million dollars per field, correct?
Right. Yeah, if you just split it.
And now, because of an offer in the, from the private sector for a potential public-private partnership, we would be looking at two and a half times the number of fields at 2.2 million dollars per field to the taxpayer-ish.
Yeah, in the ballpark. And technically, three times, because we have three fields, there will be a total of nine, as is shown.
Ah, that's right. Thank you very much. And then this site, the Midtown site, is closer, from a proximity standpoint, to the original baseball plan going way back. In fact, this tract shares a, a border with it, right? It's adjacent to it.
Correct.
And this plan, if we pursue it, the Midtown plan, would be closer to the original horizon vision that we had with Texas Independence Ballpark as far as the number of fields total at the end of the day.
Correct. Yes.
In fact, we would have more by one field.
Right, right. I mean, the plan for the city originally at Texas Independence was four fields. There were the potential for four additional fields, but if, but the only ones that were funded and approved were four. So if you look at pure field count, we would be five more than the city was going to build and even one more than there was an ultimate build site for.
And the horizon view, as I recall, the eight at Texas Independence Park, would have even back then, based on the budget prognostication, cost more than what the ask is to the taxpayer to partner in this public-private partnership.
Yes, correct.
The Bombers staff can ask Texas A&amp;M University and ask CSISD to help find them a home in the event that it takes too long? Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, we're having those discussions already.
And only $500,000 of what we've spent so far at Veterans is unrecoverable to the taxpayer, correct?
Correct. Unless you do something on that site, in which case potentially it would be recoverable.
If that's possible, and that's a lot of money, $500,000, but in the overall scheme of the project, we're looking at strategically 10.5 million a field versus 2.2, and we could still even recover a piece of the 500,000 that's somewhat unrecoverable.
Correct.
I think I know what this council person is going to say we should do next, and I thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Yancy. You've, you've covered the numbers well, and I appreciate that, because it paints the picture. We're going to end up getting more than we had originally envisioned for less money at a location that is as close to the original vision as you can get. I think it's a good idea to continue to pursue this, and I appreciate it.
Mr. White?
Mr. White? Uh, yes, I, I think from, from here on, we need to shift our focus to working out something, the vision being at Midtown, whether, however that goes about, and I'm interested to see what staff will bring back quickly to us, but I think it's, I mean, ultimately, everyone's already said it, the Veterans Park was definitely, was coping, and this feels like it's hoping, right? It's not, it's not quite, we're not coping with lost opportunity. This is a, a new opportunity that we can kind of see where it goes, saves, saves, I think taxpayers overall some money, because we really are dumping a lot of money into a pretty niche thing in general. Baseball is niche, not everyone participates, not everyone plays, so I think it's, being stewards of that money, i- it's important to make sure that we're getting the bang for our buck, and I think the public-private partnership is one way to go about that. So my recommendation is to shift focus to Midtown and see what, how our vision looks there. Thanks.
Mr. White?
With all due respect to my colleagues, I, I, I see where they're going. Let me, let me first state that I am supportive of the baseball fields at Midtown, okay? But this body made a decision over three months ago to move forward with baseball fields at Veterans. Some individual has come to the city and said that they would like to put three times the number of baseball fields in an area that we just got through discussing and turning down an opportunity for, for an investor to come in. And it seems like the decision now is either or, okay? I don't think that's the right decision. I don't think that is the right decision. We gave, this body gave the word to our citizens that we are going to move forward with Veterans, right? Now, all of a sudden, a new idea comes and we're going to just chase the money. Is it true that, that this Midtown, we're going to need to either give them the land or lease them the land?
Yeah. I mean, based on their presentation, business model, and obviously all this is preliminary until we bring it forward, but the, yes, there would be a contribution of the land, you know, in some way, either that we would sell it to them for basically not any money or that we would lease it to them for not any money, and then there would be a capital contribution on our part.
And capital contribution is about 15 million?
Yeah. And it depends on, again, what the ask is and if we were to build, you know, the championship field or they were to build it, but approximately, yes.
We've put a million and a half into Veterans, and you're basically saying that, that design concept could be moved over to Midtown.
Correct.
Was there any, any soil samples? Were there any infrastructure review in Veterans that cannot be transferred over to Midtown other than the design?
Yes, and when I talk about, about the, the 500,000 or so, that's really what you're looking at, which is what I would call any site-specific improvements or work. So specifically, things related to the, you know, the tributary or the site grading on Veterans, that wouldn't transfer over. And of course, any kind of geotechnical testing or things you do preliminarily. Now, of course, if you come back and that site were to be developed on Veterans someday, then that would be useful information and, and could be part of a project, so you could recover that. But anything site-specific would not be transferable to Midtown or any other site.
But may be used for a future project at Veterans.
Correct.
Could we, could we, could we do both? Can we, can we do both? I mean, from a capital expenditure standpoint, can we do both and, and take each project on the merit of that specific project and move forward with Veterans, knowing that we're going to build three, three baseball fields there and build that into our negotiations when we, when we're talking about Midtown? Can we do both of those?
Yeah, so to answer the question at the most basic level, if you're looking at it only as I stand here in front of you with this, yes, the council has enough funding through cash or debt to be able to fund both projects. Now, obviously, and, and we're going to come back in, in December and actually have another discussion about capital projects, because every meeting when we talk about things that we're going to do, that we want to do as a staff or you want to do as a council or that people come as a community, those projects have real dollar amounts that tick away at those, and so it, it can be easy to lose sight of, you know, what the, what the opportunity cost is. So yes, you can fund it, and if council wanted to do both or do, you know, any of the other number of projects, it's just a matter of where does that fit in, in the bigger capital program, and what else would you not do to compensate for the additional funding? So at this point, and again, preliminarily, building it at either place is kind of within what we already have considered as a budget based on council's direction. If you were to, to say, now we want to do both, it would be no different than adding an additional project in any other capacity. That's council's purview. We would go back and show you, okay, now this is what your finances look like when you do that, and then here are the, here are the choices you would have to make. But there's no, you know, legal or financial burden to you doing both, it's just a council decision.
How, how far along are we in the discussions with this public-private partnership? Are we, because this is bearing a decision whether we move forward with Veterans. How, how far along? Is this a, a good opportunity? Is it a kind of a, a long shot? Where are we in the negotiations? And I know we've only been doing it for a couple of weeks now, but the, the developer is very passionate. I, I love his passion. Of course, I love the baseball concept, but how realistic are we that this would materialize into something that could, could happen?
Uh, that's a terrible question to ask me. So what I would, what I would say is, you're, you are where you are on any of these deals, right? I think from what we see, there's legitimacy to the concept and to the, the proposal and to the outcome. It's just like any other deal that we look at, whether it was, you know, looking at a, a deal that we were looking at Midtown site or any of the other ones that we do, it, it just depends on how it turns out. Now, what I will say, and I think is important for people to understand, is we are always planning through all the contingencies, right? So if, if the council is directing us to do one thing or do the other, I mean, by virtue of thinking about what we can do, that's the reason this Midtown thing came forward, because we had talked about it many other times, but the circumstances were not set such that this made any sense. So we are also planning for, if council were to tell us, okay, we're going to Midtown, and something were to go afoul with, with this deal, then what would we do? And, and looking at what those options would be. So that's the part we do from our side. We always have a plan to, to adjust if things change, either the will of the council or, or our partners, and is the same reason we're here now. You also would always have the option to go back to Veterans. The key here is that you, you've reached a, a critical point on, on the timeline for opening construction in '27 in Veterans. But if you were to choose to try to pursue this Midtown, if it was council's will to say, based on the opportunity, we have to do this, and it were not to pan out through all those different contingencies, then you still could go back to Veterans and build it, that what you would have sacrificed is the potential for opening, opening day of '27.
So you say today, tonight's really kind of a critical point. So if you, if you fast forward and you take May of 2027, how many months is that? Is that 18, whatever that is? How long would it take, thinking of the Bombers now, how long would it take, if we move forward with Midtown, for it to be ready to, to play in that championship field?
Well, we're still looking at that, and we're trying to explore what scenarios would allow for us to potentially open a, a field on Midtown by that same date, based on the fact that we wouldn't necessarily be having to start and do the significant site work that we would be doing on Veterans. So in theory, if we could start at a similar time with the main body of construction over there than we could in Veterans, then maybe it's possible. But I would consider, or I would say in any of these scenarios where we don't move forward with the Veterans project as, as previously directed, that we're considering options to help the Bombers adjust for not being able to play on a constructed field by the city until '28. So we're looking for alternatives for that. And we would do the same thing if the council, I, I should say, what happens if we, if the council were to go forward with Veterans or the Midtown option had never existed, and then we saw two months of solid rain, you're not going to make that date either. So we're, we will be looking at the same options, saying, well, what do we do if it doesn't open? Right? I mean, we always have to have those contingencies.
So the number 35 million has been shared with us, that that's what it would take to, to make the ball field?
That's our current working estimate for Veterans. Obviously, you don't know until it's completely built, but that's our estimate.
So we're going to put 15 million into the Midtown? So that gives us a net of 20. What's the land worth? My point is, are we, my, my colleague mentioned, you know, 2,000 or $2 million per baseball field. Is it really? I mean, I know we're going to be saving money, I know we're going to get more, but can you tell me exactly what the savings would be by stopping Veterans and moving to Midtown?
So I'm going to channel my inner Jeff Kirsten and tell you, and Jennifer Kane and say, can I tell you exactly? Absolutely not. I mean, and I couldn't even really tell you that, because I, we, we won't see Veterans till it's in. But if we're looking at order of magnitude, it depends. If we build, if we were to build the championship stadium at Midtown, we think that that's going to be in the $23 million range, and then there's going to be some probably slightly lesser contribution to our private partners for their capital and then the land value, which, again, just depends on, on a lot of things. If they were to build it, then yes, you would be talking about contributing the 15 or, in that case, really 20 million that would, they would need for the, their, their championship field plus the land value. And we do believe there's a discrepancy probably betw, in some costs between what we designed at Veterans and what they intend, and there's probably already some, some work to do there to figure out what the end product we want is, but that's kind of the, the base numbers on it of, of what you would see. So it's a similar expenditure in either case of, of the two. There will be additional expenditures at Midtown for infrastructure, but they would be there in some way, shape or form, no matter what. If you recall, when we were looking at the data center, that was like one of the pieces is that you wouldn't be building roads and those things. That's because in order to develop that site as it was originally laid out, you were going to have to have infrastructure, and there was a cost that was going to be and there was a cost that was gonna be there. So that part is not in that baseball calculation. It will need to come forward, so you're gonna spend that money, that nine-point-seven and, and more that we needed to develop that. But ultimately, what that does is it allows you to, to monetize the rest of the land and sell it off to, to development.
Well, let me close by saying that I, I, I want to reiterate, I'm very supportive of the Midtown project, okay? I want, I want to make sure I go on record by saying that. However, I don't think we have enough information yet to make a decision on the Midtown. I think we have ample opportu, ample information, and this body has made a commitment to our community to move forward with Veterans. Therefore, I think we need to move forward with Veterans and then review Midtown when we have the information to do it. Thank you so much.
Mayor.
Thank you, uh, may I?
Before you bring us home, can I ask one more?
Okay, please do.
Thank you very much. You just alluded to the additional land. In other words, the baseball fields at Midtown would not take up the entire track, correct?
Correct.
And our chief development officer, your administration, has looked at the land that would be left over after the baseball fields. And there's several opportunities there
Right.
to retain the business purpose of the twenty-seventeen master plan, albeit not M-one industrial.
Right.
But the city's kind of grown around it. I mean, it's kind of an awkward place for industrial now, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, and this is, I don't think it's stepping outside of my spot, but this is a policy decision. But I think, given what we saw, right, which for all, strip away all the parts of it, what we brought as a potential development, fit that zoning, and it was, in, in some ways, much less intense than you looked at from the original idea. So, um, I, I've even been asked, well, why wasn't this baseball park originally thought about to come back here? Well, the reason was, is because if you're gonna develop that site as it was originally intended, or looked at, then the value of the land, i- it wouldn't make any sense. But what we heard from the community and why we brought this forward is, is, well, if that's not necessarily compatible anymore with what is in the community, then you, the, the value of that land, the way you're gonna use it, is gonna have to change. So it's not the same as saying, we're gonna take industrial or manufacturing land and turn it into parkland. So, um, what we have done is looked at this and said, there's kind of two components. If the baseball fields are gonna go forward, we want that to still be able to work within, um, hopefully, you know, not only creating economic value on its own, but creating opportunity for the rest of that site, you know, the, the, the half of it that's gonna be left over, um, and we want that to be compatible. And so what does that look like? So what we are really trying to do is create, um, a plan for the baseball that allows us to move forward with that expeditiously. But then, we are not, we are trying to basically leave as much developable land, that then we could come back and look at, how is it that we want to use that that's compatible with the, the neighboring, uh, uh, community, the overall community, the baseball park? So we're not having to choose, okay, if we do this baseball park, here's the ultimate layout that we have to have, and here's the ultimate use of it.
Good copy, thank you, Mayor.
Well, since you, uh, said that I could bring us home, that means nobody else can speak again on this subject, so I'm, I will. I've got five minutes, but I won't take that much time to meet your nine o'clock goal.
That was the meeting goal, I thought, but...
No, I, I think that's a good goal, we'll finish before nine. Unlike my neighbor here, uh, who would like his cake and eat it too, uh, uh, my, my concern is, I don't think we can afford to have both. I think this is a strategic decision that needs to be made, and that, and, and I think by making a decision to move to, to, uh, to Midtown, which I support, and, and you do in general, but not at the cost of, of Veterans, I don't see how we can continue, or should continue, to be spending funds to prep and then develop and build a, a, a whole complex at Veterans Park. I just don't see the need for both of those, and I think your opportunity cost of that land in Veterans Park is still there for other things that maybe a future council in five or ten years will decide now is the right time to do whatever is needed at that time. So, um, my question, the only question to you is, how does the, uh, committee that you've been working with on baseball, like, just for the lack of a better term, the baseball committee, the various interest groups that you have engaged in all this discussion to get us to where we are on Veterans Park, how do they fit into this, uh, dialogue going forward?
Well, one, obviously, we talked to them about it, and, um, Jennifer, or, or somebody else can chime in, but I would say their, their general thoughts, which we've shared, or they're always excited about more baseball, um, and the opportunity over there. Certainly, I think there's, a, a concern is always about timing, uh, as we've all discussed. How do they, how do they involve moving forward? I mean, I think we would still utilize them, um, you know, right now, we're not, because we're, we're trying to, you know, basically see, can we hammer out the basic tenants of this deal? But I think they make up, uh, the baseball community. I know Thomas has been engaged with many of the same people and more, and so have we, so we haven't engaged them formally, but I think they would have a, a similar role as we start to move forward. And I think, honestly, a lot of the work that they've done is, is, uh, you know, even, as we've said, financially, easily transferable. So it would just be a matter of engaging them in the rest of it. And, and I think you're gonna bring other people in too, because you've, you've got so many people over there. You've got trails and other things that we're gonna have to consider as a part of the way this is all laid out. So it'll probably get expanded a little even, uh, uh, more outside of just that baseball committee.
Yeah, well, no, I would suggest, and, and I'm not asking that they have verified or, or supported or opposed this in any way, shape, or form, because I don't think they've had a chance to, uh, to dive into it. But I think from a baseball operations and, and baseball enthusiasm point of view, I think they should be, continue to be consulted and, uh, and engaged as you move forward. But my, my support is for the, uh, for moving this to Midtown and, uh, working to get that done. We still have the fallback, again, to Veterans Park. We got, um, uh, some options there, but I think the better options are at, at Midtown. And we do need to make a decision, because we got an item on the regular agenda regarding, um, further expenditures at, at Veterans Park, whether we want to pause that, uh, or delay it, or consider it later, or not do it at all, is another, is a question we'll talk about when we get to it. But it is a strategic decision. I understand that, uh, it's going to, uh, require us to work with, um, with one of the, um, enthusiastic partners, which is Bombers Baseball, to figure out what we can do for them, with them, uh, and support their efforts, uh, in the intervening year. So I'm, uh, ready to go, and I think you've got at least, uh, five, if not six, five and a half.
Well, I'll wait for the vote, um, and I do have a statement. Uri gave, we met with him and discussed all this, he's not able to be here tonight. But I think it's probably appropriate to read it at the actual item, so if you'll remind me, I'll read it out, and you all have a copy of that as well.
Well, this is, does say possible action, so I think the staff is looking for a fairly clear direction. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion regarding, uh, moving this forward, Ms. McLeeny?
A move that we move forward with the plan at Midtown, that we cease work at Veterans for the time being. Um, and at Midtown, um, whether this winds up being us alone or us with a partner, that, that's the site that, uh, we should move forward with, but would like for you to continue, uh, working with the group that has, uh, come forward, um, Southern Roots, and, um, see if we can broker a public-private partnership in this.
That's a long motion. I'd like to amend it, if I may.
You wanna shorten the motion?
Shorten it, but add, uh...
We got a, we got a motion on the floor. If you don't like it, don't, don't second it.
I would like...
You don't like it, but, but you want...
I would like to amend it as well.
A failure, a failure of a second
Yeah.
Means that I don't consider it.
I'll second the core of her motion.
You make a motion, and she can second it. Because I don't...
The motion, the motion's been made and seconded, so now if anybody wants to make an amendment, you can propose that.
Well, I didn't hear a second.
He seconded.
I seconded.
Oh, you did second.
Yes, sir.
After all, I thought you were want, really wanting to change the motion. Okay, now...
I would amend the motion to, uh, add that staff continued to pursue lot sales and preservation of land in that business park for business, which was the business park's original intent.
Do I hear a second? I don't hear a second to the amendment.
I will second.
You're seconding the amendment, okay. Okay, we now have an amendment on the floor and a second. We didn't have to go through all this, but we did. So we've got a measure, motion on the floor and a second, and do you want to speak to your motion beyond any? I don't, I don't really want you to, but...
Nope.
Okay, and, and, uh...
Ever want me to speak there?
You, if you, and let me ask a second, Uri, do you want to speak to your motion in a second? Okay. Okay, we have, we have one person that wants to, wants to speak to the amendment. We're talking about an amendment to the original motion. And all, all the amendment does is specifically direct staff regarding...
Point of clarification, point of clarification. The original motion, does that affect our regular agenda item that we will be voting on as well?
No, no, that'll be voted on separately.
Because the, the, she said cease work at Veterans.
Yeah, I think, I, I think I take this as direction to me. Um, if you come back and you were to pass item nine-point-five, uh, we will, at the next meeting, I'll be coming back for some clarification.
Okay, didn't, did you not say that, that your motion did include cease the, okay? Would you entertain...
Let's, let's get the amendment taken care of first.
I would like to speak to the amendment really quickly, Mayor. I would like to speak to the amendment really quick.
Speak to the amendment, that's fine.
Right, just the amendment. Um, I completely agree that we need to address, uh, the rest of the city-owned property. I would like to have a more robust discussion about that at a later date, um, independent of the discussion of baseball.
Does that interfere with your, your intent?
Doesn't, doesn't interfere with the motion, the amendment, no, sir.
Okay, he doesn't believe it does.
Because we would have, we would have to have more robust discussion anyway.
So we got a mo, an amendment and a second, uh, all those, and, and did you get the second for the amendment? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion, uh, signify by saying aye, and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you're voting against the amendment.
Yes, I, I would like to do that as an independent function.
Okay, so you've, the amendment carries five to one, all right? So we now have an amended motion, whether you liked it or not. We now have your motion, it's on the floor.
Wait, I don't think that was five to one.
Well...
Who voted for the amendment?
Well, didn't I see three hands down here? No, I didn't. Oh, I didn't see. Raise your hands again if you're for the motion. Okay, one, two, three...
Four, two.
Four, four, two, four, two, okay. Now let's go back to the base motion. It's, it's still amended, now it's amended, because we got four, two. And all it does is direct staff to, um, to look into and, and maintain that idea that it's a business park.
Of course.
And, and that's fine. They can still come back and, and present whatever options they want to with us.
I'm crystal clear, I got y'all.
Now we have a motion on the floor that was made by Ms. McLeeny, seconded by, an amended motion. Now, anybody wish to speak to that, or can we move ahead?
I now solidly support the amended motion.
You will support the amended motion, okay. Anybody else, uh, you want to speak to the amended motion?
I would like to speak to the amended motion. I would like to get a clarification that the motion did state that we cease all activity at Veterans Park. If that is the motion, i- is that part of the motion that was made?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and, um...
Well, technically, it was the core motion, not the amended one, but...
Well...
Well, it's, it's, well, it is part of the motion, it is part of the motion.
With the amendment, yeah.
And can you tell me how that...
Well, it, it will affect item nine-point-four, if, if, if you...
No, not nine-four.
Whatever, nine-point-five, whatever that one is, that there's a, there's a motion, there's a, there's a, there's an item on the regular agenda about further, uh, civil work.
So if we vote in favor of this motion, then we have, in essence, turned down nine-point-five. That is now a mute issue, is that correct?
No, uh, you, you have directed me, and then you could potentially vote on an item counter to that direction, in which case, I would ask for clarification and say that basically, I'm gonna follow this motion as closely as I can, with the exception of the fact that you have passed a contract, which necessitates that we execute that contract.
I would like to ask the author of the motion to remove that, so we can have a, a healthy discussion on nine-point-five when we get to that.
I think it's already hap, I don't think I have any control over that.
There's an amended motion on the floor that includes your statement that we would cease, uh, development at Veterans Park. If you want to leave it there, leave it there.
From a procedural standpoint, you could ask, you could move to amend the motion to take out the part you don't like, but that would be the way that you would have to do that.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion to remove the clause that states that we cease any activity at Veterans Park.
Do I see a second to the amendment?
I'll second, because it's fair and we're about to hear the item.
All right, now we gotta vote on another amendment.
Well, I mean, it's fair, he, he holds a different opinion.
Another amendment, all right. You've already spoken, do you, do you have any more to say about your amendment?
No, sir.
Do you have any more to say about the amendment?
Negative, no, sir.
Okay, there's a, there's amendment, another amendment on the floor to remove the clause about ceasing operations at Veterans Park, uh, for the baseball fields. All those in favor of this amendment signify by raising your hand. Three to three, so the amendment fails. Only three people voted for this amendment.
What, what did you vote?
I know.
Only six, obviously.
So the amendment failed. You had three people voted for the amendment, so it failed, and only, and three people, well, all those, all those opposed, raise your hand. Okay, we have three to three, which without seven people, the amendment fails, right? So we now got the original motion back on the floor, let's vote on it. You can, you can still, you can still have your discussion.
I'll just point out that if you don't pass nine-point-five, we're not doing anything over there anyways.
Well, we'll get there, he can have his argument again at nine-point-five, okay? All, okay, all right, we now have a, an, a motion on the floor. The original amended motion, I should say, one amendment. And that amendment, that amendment, that, I mean, that motion is to...
Move baseball operations to Midtown.
And cease...
And cease work in developing baseball fields at Veterans Park for the time being, and to move forward, looking for, um, the details of a possible private-public, public-private partnership.
And, does that include your amendment?
Maintain all the developable land for future that's not needed for the baseball park.
Yeah, but I don't think you have to restate the amendment, just...
But, but the amendment is in the motion now, so I want the motion to be included in your language.
Tanya, are you clear?
Yes, sir.
I think the, I believe the motion, I believe the motion is to cease efforts to develop baseball fields at Veterans Park, shift that effort to Midtown, to include negotiation with the current, uh, folks who are presenting it, entertain any of their possibilities and bring that to council, as well as maintaining all available land not needed for the baseball fields for future development as a business park.
Correct.
That's what I thought I heard, and so I just wanted you to include that part. That's the motion on the floor.
Exactly.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, and raise your hand. Aye, three, four, five, for those opposed, one, five to one, we carried that. And, uh, I will recognize that, um, Mr. White did support the Midtown, but he also doesn't want to... So just for that reference, he, he didn't want to give up on the Veterans Park just yet. We'll have that discussion later on. Anything further you need, Mr. Woods?
I think I got all of it.
I thought we were done at nine o'clock, it takes us ten minutes to get a motion. All right, uh, moving on then, um, do you need a break now? No.
I'm just, I'm gonna outweigh you.
Okay, we're not gonna take a break unless somebody tells me we do, because I already took my break. All right, item, uh, where, where are we? Nine-point-one, regular agenda. Mr. DeHaven has been sitting there quietly all evening, and now your turn. Presentation, discussion, possible action on the ordinance and, and ordinance authorizing the redemption of a portion of city college station general obligation improvement and refunding bonds, series twenty-thirteen, and approving a related escrow agreement. Mr. DeHaven.
Yeah, Michael DeHaven, Fiscal Services. So again, this, this item is, uh, defeasance, which is basically paying off the, uh, two thousand thirteen general obligation bonds. And I'll go over a little bit of our active, um, um, debt service management real quick, um, before we get into the details. So we do actively manage our debt service obligations, um, with the city. We look at interest rates, um, callability of bonds, um, pretty much at all times. Uh, there's two ways that we can reduce debt service obligations. That is with refunding bonds, that basically is just refinancing debt like you do on your mortgage, and cash defeasance, which is when you have, um, cash on hand, you can basically pay off bonds outright. Um, bonds that we issue, um, at the city are callable after ten years, that's when you could actually call them back and pay them off. Um, we target around five percent, um, net present value savings when we look to do that. We target around 5% net present value savings when we look to do that. And currently right now, we've had some really good investment returns in the debt service fund, INS tax fund, over the last few years, and some prior refundings that has produced some excess cash in the reserve balance that gives us the ability to do a cash defeasance. So looking at the 2013 general obligation bond specifically, those bonds have coupons at 4.22% right now. The balance of that debt service obligation is a little over $4 million, $4,330,041. The funds needed to cash the fees or basically pay these bonds off right now would be $3,665,894. So that would give us a cash flow savings over the life of those bonds of $664,147. That is a net present value savings of $236,714, or 5.5%, which is over our 5% hurdle rate. All those numbers together say this saves the city money by defeating these bonds. Here's kind of the timeframe, because this might be new for some of the council members that haven't been through one of these. Basically, right now would be, council will be approving the resolutions for us to defuse those bonds. A little later in the month, we would subscribe for what's called state local government series securities through the Treasury Department. These are actually special securities that protect the tax exempt nature of the bonds. Early in November, we'd close on those securities and fund the escrow account at, at the bank. Our escrow agent would then send out notices to all the bondholders, letting them know that we're going to call those bonds back. And then in mid-December, we'd actually call those bonds back and pay them off. That's kind of the timeframe on that. And that's all I got. So questions?
One, one quick question.
Yeah.
What we've done is before, we've typically bought or sold new bonds.
Correct, refunding bonds.
Because the interest rate was quite a bit lower.
Yes.
And this time, we're using cash to, just to buy it out.
Yeah, and so, and that, normally when we do that 5% net present value savings, you look at, on the refunding bonds, you look at your current debt service payment, and then what the new bond would look like. Doing cash, we look at that debt service payment, but we look at what our investment returns would be on the cash savings, and that's how you get to the same kind of net present value savings.
So in addition to the money, we say we're actually in a bit, in a position then with a, a little more, at the current tax rate, a little more availability to sell some new bonds if we needed to for some other.
Yeah, this would basically, by doing this, freeze up our, basically our capacity in our debt service fund.
Increase the capacity, right.
Yep.
So anytime you can save money, it makes sense to me, we've done this a lot of times, but always when we were buying a lot, or selling a lot cheaper bonds.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Oh, yeah, going this way. Mr. Yancy, I always should turn this way, because you always got a question.
Mr., thank you, Mayor. Mr. Dehaven, I always love your presentations, and I like your style relative to municipal finance. So I'm going to use a simplistic analogy, okay? You tell me if I'm right or wrong.
Okay.
The city credit card for Capital Projects had charges in the half million dollar-ish range every year, running from 2027, for this particular tranche of bonds.
Correct.
From 2027 to 2033, correct?
Yeah, eight years, yep.
Okay, and you're paying the principal off early on the, on these credit card charges in order to avoid interest and carrying costs going forward, because we've got the money where we can do it, and you're doing it, and your target is 5%. When you can say 5%, that triggers the action, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great, and then cemetery fund. I think we've got like 5 million in outstanding bonds in the cemetery fund, but we have like $7 million in cash on hand. Why not do that in cemetery as well, or might y'all be bringing that to us at some point in the future?
So specifically, those cemetery bonds will be related to a different bond series, and it would be if those bonds are callable, again, they have to be 10 years after we've issued them. And then we would, at that same timeframe, when they become callable, we do the analysis to see, do we need to pay them off? Or do we need to refinance them if we can get bonded at a cheaper time? So yes, we look at every series of bonds when they become callable, to see what they are.
Great deal, thank you very much, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay. This item is not a public hearing, as I recall.
No, it's just a resolution.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the item.
Move to approve.
A second?
A motion by Mr. Yancy, and a second by whom? Mr. White. Very good. Any, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dehaven. That takes us to item nine point two. Jennifer Kane, this is one of two items that will need to have a record vote, and I think we have a, a motion to be made on it when we get to that. Nine point two, presentation, discussion, possible action on a resolution in the City Council of City College Station, Texas, determining that fee simple interest, public utility interest, public access and landscape easement interests and right-of-way interests are needed and needs to be acquired from the landowners for the Greens Prairie Road Phase Two widening project for the City of College Station, Texas, and authorizing the institution of eminent domain proceedings. Ms. Kane.
Good evening, Jennifer Kane, Capital Projects. Tonight on, on this item, we're talking about the Greens Prairie Road widening project, which is that section that's in the county there. We're basically widening it to the same section that you see on the other end, like right in front of, like behind Castle Gate. So as part of that process, we're requiring right-of-way and easements in certain areas to be able to widen the roadway there. And so we've been working with all the different property owners for the past year or so. There's 18 parcels that we're needing to acquire. Of the 18, we've been able to settle with all but six, and so that's what's here before you tonight. We've gone through the appraisal process, we've made our offers, done negotiations, and unfortunately, we've not been able to come to an agreeable point with them. And so we're recommending that we move forward with condemnation. And with that, I can answer any questions you can see on the map where those locations are.
Any questions for staff? Yes, Ms. McElhenney?
Just to make sure I understand the process correctly, this is the beginning of the process, not the end, and we still have the opportunity to negotiate to a amicable, amicable conclusion.
Yes, that's correct. So if we start the condemnation process and you approve this moving forward, and we'll, we'll kind of start over, they were sending out the offer letters and going through that, and so we can still have negotiations and time to settle with those property owners until it actually goes to the commissioner's court and gets finalized there. And even then, at that point, we could take a settlement to them, we've, we've done that recently.
And so if, will, will you guys bring forward any settlement offers that are contested? Or does, at this point, is council abdicating a voice in it?
May look to Adam on how we would address that.
Yeah, kind of what the next step in this process will be is that we move forward with this resolution, and that'll give us the authority to condemn the properties. The next step will be filing the petition in county court, and then it'll get set for special commissioners, and all the notices will go out to the property owners for the petition and the hearing. But at any point in time, there could be a settlement reached on any one of these parcels.
The question is, does the settlement come back to council to agree to?
I was going to say, any offer that's made, unless council gives staff specific direction and parameters to work within, always comes back to council.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none?
I, I do.
You have a question?
I do, if you don't mind.
Please, it's on item nine point two that we're talking about.
True or false, probably a question for Adam. True or false, in my tenure on council in the last three years, there have been multiple instances where we went to condemnation, and the three-member panel selected a valuation higher than what we were willing to offer.
Than we originally offered.
Yeah, there's been a few cases where the special commissioners have awarded more value than what was the appraised value, or more than we tried to negotiate with the landowner. And one of those, we did not move forward with condemnation and went to another parcel. And one of those, they awarded a higher value, and we reached a lower settlement value with the landowner.
And 18 of the 24, we were able to reach an accord, but the balance of six folks, we were not.
I believe there's nine total tracks.
Nine total tracks.
Two of the same ownership.
In the two different, in the two different amendments, nine.
Yeah, there's nine total, there's six on this project, it's really, it's seven pieces, but six different property owners.
And I couldn't correlate who's on this list with my prior learnings or information around these. That's my fault, I didn't take good notes. So as one member of council, I'm going to have to oppose these because we've grouped them all together, and my recollection is two folks, it could be, it could be perceived that they were being opportunistic, but I felt like we were just too close to go to condemnation on the others.
And so, I mean, council still can direct us to proceed with settling with any of the property owners. My recommendation is you move forward with this process, that gives you authority just in case that doesn't close, and you still have that option.
Yeah, but I don't like the message that sends. I would rather us work with them and chop the pot, so to speak, on where they're at and where we're at.
Jennifer can speak to the length that staff went to negotiations with them too, so.
Yeah, I mean, on, on all of these, it's been probably close to a year, I mean, multiple meetings, multiple phone calls, multiple going out to their properties, we have land agents that go out and have those conversations. And so again, you know, we're able, some of them were able to settle fairly quickly, but a lot of these, I mean, some of them, there's a couple of cases, maybe one or two are just unresponsive, or maybe there's one in particular that has a lot of liens on them, and so in this case, they wouldn't actually be receiving any of the money, it would go to the lien, the people holding their liens, and so that, that's part of it, to kind of clear that. And then in other cases, they were, they had unreasonable expectations, whether it be money, or if it's, you know, one of them was asking for a warranty that we'd guarantee that their property would never, ever flood. You know, some things that, that the city wouldn't normally agree to, or there are stipulations on the, on the easements or on the right-of-way, so those types of things. But it is extensively negotiated, it's not like we go out there one time and have a conversation. If they don't agree, then we just, you know, move forward for condemnation. It's a very extensive process that we work really hard to get those agreements in place.
I, I think I would make three other points on this that are really important. Number one, we have a fiduciary responsibility to, to acquire this land and to do it within as reasonable a cost as can be, and we have determined through, I guess, an equitable process, what the fair market value is. As a matter of fact, we are required to get independent appraisal of these pieces of property, so we're starting from that. Secondly, many of the other pieces of property did settle for that, or very close to it. So I think it's a little inequitable for us to arbitrarily decide that on our own, we would pay a lot more for some of the other properties, even though original agreements with the neighboring properties were reached at an equitable fair market value. And I think the third point is that ultimately, by going to condemnation, you get a, through, an independent arbitration committee, for lack of a better term, that's not quite right, but the committee that looks at it, and they decide what the, what the property is worth, and then, you know, we are, we are getting direction from somebody other than ourselves as to what, what they view the, the relevant debate and argument is over the damage to the property, or whatever the ancillary issues might be. So I think we have fairly evaluated, praised the property, and any damages we would cause that would require fences to be moved or, or things like that, and included that already in the offer. So it seemed to me unfair to the, to the other people who have settled for us to just say, well, we don't need to condemn these, we'll just pay whatever, whatever we want to pay. At least with a condemnation, you've got a third party that comes in and says, yeah, it might be a lot higher than our appraised value, but at least it's a third party that says, this is our arbitrated valuation, and parties, you got to live with that or not. So to me, there's enough weight on that other side of the argument. I understand the basic point, but that, we can still negotiate. We just get this process started, we can negotiate with those people if you want to. That's, we already have been for a couple of years.
I think, I think that's a fair and eminently reasonable position, Mayor, and one that I would never begrudge my colleagues. If that's the will of the council, I would just hope that they wouldn't begrudge me mine. I've got real issues with, with takings.
So. Explain that a little bit more. So there is a committee that, there's kind of an arbitration committee? They will make a decision, and then we will just give them whatever that committee or that arbitration agreed to?
Let the attorney or staff explain that.
These are all statutory rules that we have to abide by when we condemn land. You have to send an offer letter, a final offer letter, and then council has to give us authority with this resolution to go forward with condemnation. The next step is you file a petition in the county court to start that proceeding. Then it goes kind of to administrative function, and the county judge appoints three disinterested property owners that are special commissioners. And they will sit and listen to our appraiser, our engineers, our project managers talk about the project, and they will listen to whoever the landowner hires to talk about the value of the property, and then they will determine a value. And that's the way the rules are for condemning land. And if we don't like that value, we can object to that value, and we've done that before, and then try to work out another deal.
And so when that value is, is determined, then we, we pay them whatever that agreed-upon amount is?
If the city agrees, and that'll be a council decision, we would then deposit the money with the register of the court, and then we take possession of the land.
So there's no situation where we just take the possession of the land without paying them any money?
Oh, no, that's a violation of the Constitution.
You can't do that.
No, that's, that's not how that process works.
You have to be compensated for your property. Okay, that's what I just wanted to just clarify.
Right.
And this is just another way of getting to that value through a condemnation process, which may encourage more negotiation to get it to something we can accept without the condemnation, if we think that's closer than what the committee would come up with. But that's a decision we'll make down the road as, as offers are made. So it's really just a part of the process, we're initiating a process. And we've done it lots of times, particularly for, everything I remember is for utilities and, and right-of-way to, to address a significant transportation problem, issue. We're committed to building that, widening that section of road, which is in the county, but we're authorized now to build it, and the county has paid us $4 million to get the thing moving, so we're just trying to get it moving.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, okay, we're at that point. Yes, you do have a motion to make, and remember, this is a motion for record, which means we'll go down the line from Mr. Smith this way by place and, and raise a hand and say whatever your vote is.
All right. I move that the City of College Station authorize the use of the power of eminent, eminent domain to approve Resolution Number 10 dash 23 dash 25 dash nine point two, authorizing the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire fee, simple interest, public utility interest, public access and landscape easement interest, and right-of-way interest for the construction, maintenance and operation for the Greens Prairie Road widening project as described in said resolution.
A second?
Give your motion and a second, any clarification needed? Okay, the motion for record, we'll start with place one.
Yes.
Yes.
Raise your hand.
Yes.
Yes. You?
No.
Man, you're, you're the next one. You're voting?
No.
No, she said no.
And no.
Okay, motion carries four to two, is that sufficient? Good enough, okay, four to two. All right. And now we have a similar motion, a similar item. Ms. Kane will stay there, let me read it, nine point three. Presentation, discussion, possible action on a resolution of the City Council of City College Station, Texas, determining that fee simple interest and right-of-way interest are needed and needs to be acquired from the landowners for the Victoria Avenue Roundabout and Sidewalk Project for the City of College Station, Texas, and authorizing the institution of eminent domain proceedings. So you want to make a presentation on this one?
Sure, it's similar to the last one, this is for the Victoria Avenue Roundabout Project and sidewalks. So it's where we're adding the roundabout, they're at Creek Meadows off of Victoria, and then we're also adding sidewalks along the roadway to connect into where they are past Wood Lake Drive, near the Castle Gate subdivision. So as part of this, there are four tracks that need to be condemned, it's three different property owners. So as part of this, there are four tracks that need to be condemned. It's three different property owners. There was a couple of other ones that we've already negotiated and settled with, but one is, one in particular is with the Creek Meadows neighborhood there. And then the other two, the Van Nord and the Lings are associated with the sidewalk work that we need, that we added as part of the scope later in the project.
Is it, do I remember correctly that nobody really knows who owns the Creek Meadow, the medians there?
That is correct. So it was, they were technically still owned by the developer, even though the HOA has been maintaining them and has built in them, yes.
So ultimately, who will get the money? Well, if we, once we condemn and get them, I mean, we haven't got anybody to negotiate, basically, right?
Right. I believe it would go to the developer.
Right. We have reached out to their attorneys and have gotten no response. So we'll notice both parties and then the money will be deposited in the registry of the court and then they can figure out who gets it.
So we would put the money, assuming the condemnation proceedings proceed and if the council passes a condemnation, the committees meet, it's a different committee entirely from the other one, right?
It could be the same people. It all depends on who the judge appoints.
Depends on the judge, okay. But the point is, we can't, we can't take possession of that area without the condemnation because nobody will respond.
Right.
And they will let the court sort that out, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, you have a question?
So is this, is, this is not infrastructure. This is a city initiative that we're going to build a roundabout. How did we determine?
It is infrastructure.
Explain to, explain to us one more time, if you don't mind, what we're actually doing here? Because the title said a roundabout.
Yes, so there's going to be a roundabout added there at the intersection of Creek Meadows in Victoria. At one point in the project, maybe a year or so ago, we had two roundabouts contemplated. One was at Creek Meadows and one was down at Wood Lake through public meetings and different discussions with, you know, internal staff. We determined that really just the roundabout at Creek Meadows was needed, so that is still going in there. It's helpful with, I mean, traffic patterns, traffic calming, all sorts of things. There's a lot of traffic going through there and it'll be really, in our opinion, and as our design team's opinion, it'll be really beneficial to the area. And then the other piece we heard from the public meetings was that there was a really large desire from the communities in the area to have some sidewalk connections in between the Creek Meadow subdivision, down to where it ties in because there are sidewalks all down through the Castle Gate area, past Wood Lake. And so we are adding a sidewalk to connect there as part of this project as well.
Okay.
Just in fairness, this project was initiated before you got on council.
Right, right.
The extension or the rebuilding of Victoria was debated and discussed more than a year ago. So you and
But this is not, this is not water. This is not sewer. This is just traffic control initiatives that we have come up with.
Yes, the only utility component related to this, it's well-burned water in this area. And so there is a well-burned water line that we're going to have to relocate as part of our project. But no, there's no city infrastructure as far as water, wastewater.
Just to be clear, it's the road, whole roadway. These intersections are part of the roadway project.
Well, we're just adding, we're just adding the roundabout and the sidewalks.
Right, so they're four, they're four
But we're building the road itself.
Right, they connect the road. They're intersections on this roadway project. So when you're talking about, just to be clarified, when it's infrastructure, it is a piece of our roadway.
Yeah, when I mentioned infrastructure, I'm talking underground type of stuff. So this is, okay, I think I've, I think I've got a clear picture. Thank you.
Is this like a Lincoln Avenue type roundabout or is it a real one?
It's, it's larger than Lincoln, yes.
Okay, because the Lincoln one is like a speed bump that's round in the middle of the road.
All I can say is the project has been debated by a previous council and I think we had approved it. I believe the capital funds are available, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
If you vote against the condemnation, that's your choice, obviously. But I would, I would indicate that the project is from the edge of Castle Gate Two all the way to Auburn Road, correct?
So what we're doing as part of the capital project really is just the roundabout there and then the sidewalk connection. Public Works is going to redo the surface of the roadway as a street maintenance program project. So yes, the entire, that will, but it will happen a little bit different times.
Public Works is not here at the moment, I don't believe. Are they?
No, she left.
So to me, it's all one big project, yeah. Part of it's capital projects, part of it is, is street reworking. I guess you call it street maintenance. It's really rebuilding in some places because there's base failures as well. So I just wanted to share with our fellow council members that weren't here at the time we debated that reworking of Victoria, that it was much debated by a previous council. The roundabout and the sidewalks came about as, as this project had been discussed with neighbors and this is what they
And so we've reached out to the landowners and they have not responded or what, where are we in that dialogue?
So in particular with the Creek Meadows, one that Adam spoke about, that's that situation there with the whole developer and HOA that we're having some issues with, the Van Nords and the Lings. We have reached out to them. We've talked to them extensively. They have partnered together, if you will. All of their letters and their counteroffers are the exact same and they just kind of keep ticking up. We had at one point agreed to a number and in the interim of getting the contract signed, they came back another $10,000 higher. And so at that point is when we brought it forward to council and felt like it was above what we felt comfortable with and thought we should move forward with condemnation.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion.
I don't see any other questions, so please proceed with your motion, Mr. Wright.
I move that the City of College Station authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to approve Resolution Number 10 dash 23 dash 25 dash 9.3, authorizing the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire fee, simple interest and right of way interest for the construction, maintenance and operation for the Victoria Avenue Roundabout and Shared Use Path Project as described in said resolution.
I'll second.
A motion is made and made by Mr. Wright and seconded by Mr. Smith. This again is a motion for record. Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll begin again with place one for ease of the recording. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Respectfully, nay.
Motion carries four to two. You get the, all the votes? Who voted yes and no? Okay. Okay, so this motion advances as well. So that's item 9.3. Thank you very much, Ms. Kane and the City Attorney Staff. You've done a lot of work on this to get it to this stage and this is just the next stage, which requires even more work. So I appreciate what you're doing to try to move our infrastructure projects forward. Okay, item 9.4, Mr. Ostrowski, presentation, discussion, possible action on the development of a request for proposals for, proposals for a live entertainment promoter for the Wolfpen Creek Amphitheater.
All right. Good evening, Council. Michael Ostrowski. This item stems from a proposal that we received back in June. It was an unsolicited proposal for an individual or a group wanting to do live events at Wolfpen Creek. With that, we had indicated that we would draft a request for proposals to put this out to see if there are other, any other interested parties that would submit. So the draft proposal is in your packet. Just going over a few things. So the purpose here really is to identify a partner who can bring additional live entertainment to the Wolfpen Creek. Scope of the proposal talks about making sure that they would handle all the event programming and management, all the marketing and promotion for, for the venue, any financial obligations and revenue sharing and then potential venue improvements. Certain mandatory improvements in terms of the seating and shade structure. And then with the financial obligations too, there is the ability for any proposals that come in to ask the city for some financial support if that would not be completely borne by the proposal. In terms of the evaluation criteria that we'd be looking at here, that's indicated on the bottom half of your screen in terms of their experience in this field and the qualifications, what sort of marketing plan and operational plan that they would put together, what the financial benefit would be to the city, what they would be doing for, from an improvement plan at Wolfpen Creek and then really the programming ultimately for, for the site. So this is a draft RFP for your consideration and just direction. If there are things that you would also like to see included in here, also within the evaluation criteria, if there are certain components that you would like to see weighted a little bit heavier than others, would love to have that guidance here this evening.
Okay, any, I see you've got five evaluation criteria there. I don't think they ought to all be weighted equally, but if you did all five of them, you have 20, 20, 20, 20 and 20%. I don't know if that's probably correct, so, but I'll wait till, I see, there may well be some other distinct categories of evaluation that might be, might be considered. Do you have any down there? Mr. Reency has, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a really good RFP. I particularly like, what number was it? You've got a value-added category in here, optional additional improvements, and then you put encouraged parenthetically. I like that. It gives any proposers flexibility, but then you identify a couple of, you know, of things that I feel are a fair representation of what you guys have heard council say before. After three years, I love that we're here. I know this is a little different than what we said at Strategic three years ago, but I think it's really good. My questions are on the proposal criteria. And I have real issues with the state and how they hogtie us on our RFP processes. But do we have to weigh each individual criteria? Or can that be a subjective judgment will of this council? If somebody comes in really, really heavy in one with an idea, given the flexibility in here, that would have gone into something we weighed at only 10% and nobody else did, and we think that thing we didn't think of is more important to the overall project than just 10%, will we have that flexibility or will we be tied down by the scoring criteria?
I mean, one of the, the other things that you could look at, this gives submitters guidance on kind of what we're going to be focusing on. You don't necessarily have to establish specific points to each one of these criteria. What you could do is that the evaluation will be based off of these criteria, a combination of these criteria. So you don't have to establish specific points to it. You could look at them in totality.
Good. We would have that flexibility. Great. Thank you. Then I'm fine with this. I say we move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
And just to add clarification to that, when it comes to the percentages, the thing I think people don't understand is ultimately, the decision comes to council. And probably in 99% of RFPs and things, they go with staff's recommendation because they tend to be more of a technical or operational standpoint, so we're evaluating it technically. So what staff won't do is, we will evaluate this as the council tells us to put the RFP out. But then what we make is a recommendation. And so if there are other things that occur outside of the RFP that council wants to consider, especially in open session, then that's where the place for that is. So sometimes people will bring in something in RFP and say, you really need to consider this other thing. The place for that is in the council chamber. You don't want staff operating outside of the preset RFP, but that's where that crossover happens.
Other comments? The only thing I would, and I don't know exactly how you think the city ought to be weighted, but experience and qualifications is a pretty important thing here because this is a business that depends on the ability of a firm to identify and bring experiential opportunities in here. I mean, that, to me, is going to be probably a little, a little higher than weight than, say, venue improvement plan, which is important, but maybe not. One is 25%, the other one's 10 or 15%. Might make some sense if you want some feedback. That's just my two cents worth. Because the weights do matter in terms of the recommendation, although you might recommend something, even though, well, I don't know how you, you've got to show us the weight, you've got to show us the final scores. You've got to, you've got to do that. And so we've got to look at them in that order. And I think the weights are really important to it, so that's just my thought to, there is some difference. And other people may have different weights than I do. I understand that. That's just a thought that I have to share with you. Any other thoughts that anybody wants to add to that? Ms. McLean?
Just a question. When you say programming vision and diversity, does that mean you're looking at the number of types of events that they're able to or interested in bringing?
Yeah, different types of events that they would have, interests that maybe our locals or visitors would have that they would come to these different events.
And looking at the experience and qualifications, I know I'm defining with a word with the same word, but I mean, you would need to qualify what experience and qualifications you're looking for. What, what, what would you be looking for within that category in order to rank them one against the other?
Yeah, so in terms of, you know, the level of experience they have, you know, how long they've been obviously doing this, types of events that, you know, they may have brought to other communities that they have done this in. They may also be managing a venue right now, so that would also score them much higher than individuals who wouldn't be.
Thank you.
The only other thing I guess I assume is somewhere in here is that there are events that the city manages and wants to continue there.
Yeah, so that would be part
That would be part of the
That would be part of, so this is a proposal. They would submit proposals. And as we would negotiate a contract or a lease for this facility, that would be part of it where the city could still host their events within this facility.
Certain ones that they require, I mean, the city is already planning on, that would use this facility like the Fourth of July.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? This is an item on the regular agenda. I think we are, it's appropriate for us to make a motion to approve this concept and have staff, go ahead.
Yeah, I move to approve this, what's presented here.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Wright, second by Ms. McLean. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Ostrowski. Appreciate it. Now we move to item 9.5, which Ms. Kane, I guess, is back in charge of. Presentation, discussion, possible action and amendment to the construction manager at Risk Contract with Crane Group LLC accepting the CMAR's proposed guaranteed maximum price, GMP number one of up to $4.4 million, $805,696 for the Phase One infrastructure of VPAC baseball fields, plus the city's contingency in the amount of $200,000 for a total appropriation of $5 million, $5,696. Ms. Kane?
So this is the item that got discussed a little bit earlier for the baseball fields at Veterans Park. So this is GMP package number one. You'll see in here, you've got two items to consider. There's two options. One option is to just do the tributary work, which is taking all of the underground, all of the water that's conveying through there underground and culverts, so you can build fields and parking there. And then the second item includes all of the tributary work plus mass grading of the site, so getting all the dirt, again, the large components of it in the right places to build these fields. So you could, you would take one or the other if you did want to move forward with one of them. So these are the first pieces as discussed previously to get, to get the project moving forward. And it is part of our critical path to keep it on schedule. And this piece does need to go ahead of any other construction work out there. So with that, I'll be happy to answer. Any questions?
Okay, I think there was opportunity to, to Mr. White here to ask questions or consider his concerns.
Well, with all due respect, my fellow council members, I'm not going to articulate the issues that we've already done. I just respectfully ask that we move the process along so we can vote. I am going to make a motion that we approve this proposal. If somebody could respectfully second, and I know that I'm in the minority here, but I would at least allow us to vote on this. Thank you.
I'll second for a, for a formal vote.
And Mayor, if it's all right, since you have a motion, I had stated before that owner of the Bombers, Eric Gava, it's not that he'll be here tonight, but he sent a statement and I told him I'd read it on the record if council would like me to.
Without objection, the council would like you to.
In order to ensure the best long-term outcome for stakeholders, the city, its citizens, the youth sports community and the Bombers, we believe additional time is essential. We fully support proceeding with the tributary work at Veterans Park. As that infrastructure will be necessary regardless of whether the site ultimately supports the current three-field plan or a future expanded build. Moving forward with this phase allows city staff and Midtown baseball developers the time needed to deliver an optimal data-driven solution without closing the door on a potential 2027 opening at Veterans Park. Should the opportunity to play in either Midtown or Veterans extend to 2028, as previously discussed with city staff, we are confident College Station will explore alternative options, including grant support or temporary access to existing two thousand-plus seat facilities in the Aggieland area. We trust our partners at the City of College Station as we plan for a permanent home for the bombers for decades to come. Yuri Gavea, owner, Brazos Valley Bombers.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. White, do you have a motion and a second on the floor? I'll turn to you. It's your motion. Now, let me just clarify, Ms. Kane. Tributary work is one part of it. Is what I read in the packet.
Yes.
That, that could be done separately from the grading, except that the general grading could be done cheaper if it's done at the same time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Would you just review that before?
Yes, yes, so option one is the tributary work, and then option two is the tributary work plus the mass grading. If, in my opinion, if you're not sure what you're going to move forward with and just want to do the tributary work, option one would be the one to go with. If you wanted to do, you know, some other type of field or something else there in the future, the grading might look a little bit different.
But this motion, I mean, this, the item and the motion includes both.
So right now, you can do either, either option. So you need to choose option one.
No, but his motion was to approve the item as presented.
Then it would include both.
It would include both.
Yes.
Point of clarification, if we just do option one, could we still open May of 2027?
Yes, if council decided to keep moving forward with the project, and we move forward tonight with option one, and we kept going forward, we kept going for design, then yes, we could.
But you would have to come back and before that work was completed to adopt the second portion of the project to keep going, and then subsequent portions.
So there's a couple of different parts. We mentioned, you know, there will be, there'd be a design change order that would come at the next meeting to continue the rest of design. And then to Mr. Wood's point, then back in, we'd have another GMP package that would come forward later and after the first of the year that would include the mass grading and everything else.
Before, before we get into discussion, explain what does tributary work mean in this, and what's the cost of that relative to the mass grading?
Yes, so the two different options, so the tributary work is associated, you can't really tell so much on the map, but where you see kind of that red dotted line up kind of closest to University Drive on the left side. So there currently is a channel that goes through there. Basically, the water naturally flows through there, and so we can't build on top of it because it's essentially like a little creek slash, it's a tributary area. And so we're actually going to put culverts in there and then cover over on top of them to make it a solid surface to carry the water under, underground. So that's the tributary work, and that's going to go all the way from the corner of the property all the way under the parking lot area to where you see kind of those, those four lines coming down. It's going to tie in over there. So that's the tributary work, and that's the three point six six million dollars plus contingency and those types of things. The other item includes all of that same tributary work I mentioned, plus mass grading. So all the general dirt moving across the site to give it to the correct elevations that it needs to be to start building the fields.
And you're satisfied that all of the, the geotech work is fine and supports everything that's going to be built there, correct?
Yes, based on all the information we've had, we've done two different types of reports and then additional borings, yes.
So the tributary work really just allows the fields as designed to be, to be workable. You absolutely need every square foot of this space to fit three baseball fields in. But if you did something else there, you may not need to do that tributary work.
You actually would still need it because of, well, the parking, right? If you're going to build the parking there, it still needs to be conveyed under the parking.
You could pull the parking back if you weren't going to have as much parking space.
Potentially, yes. But if you did want to build out the majority of that area, you would need this tributary work in place.
But we don't have any pressing drainage problems or anything like that that would call for tributary work. The tributary, the purpose of moving forward with tributary work would only be to preserve the flexibility to continue moving forward at Veterans.
That's correct. There's not an immediate need for it if you're not planning to develop the site.
And the ultimate, we're at the ultimate will of the council not to move forward at Veterans because we're about to have nine fields over here. How much money will we have spent unnecessarily on the tributary work?
So if you were to do the tributary work here, and then you wanted to, and then you didn't want to do anything else, and you just want to do everything over at Midtown, which is what y'all were discussing earlier, then you're not necessarily wasting it if you're eventually going to build something. But if you do it and never do something there, then it was probably unnecessary.
And the amount?
It's the, well, the tributary work alone is three point six six million dollars.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're expending money now for some future value, but you're not going to get the value out of it now. That's the question, do you want to spend money now? It might be cheaper now than it would be five years from now, probably would be, but that's not the question. But we're impinging on your time. This is your motion, sir.
Oh, yeah, and I understand. And my colleague who seconded my motion, I would like to respectfully modify that to only include the tributary work, option one, for consideration. If you would approve that, I still would like to have a motion on the floor for a vote to do option one of the proposal.
I'll voluntarily.
White has amended his motion, and Ms. Secunder has accepted the amendment.
Yes.
The reversion of it. Now, you want to speak to your motion or?
No, sir, I appreciate the time that council gave me earlier on this issue. I can.
Okay, thank you. I would, all I would say is that, you know, I think it's always good to invest in the future, but I can't see sinking three point six six million into this if in fact we're not going to use it for maybe five, ten, fifteen years, and who knows what for. So I would respectfully not support the motion. Any other comments?
Just one, you know, if I felt like there was a chance that we would not be moving forward with the ball fields at Midtown, whether it's us or a public-private partnership, I would be able to support this. But again, over three million dollars for a window of time of two weeks, I just can't get there.
Thank you, Ms. McLeaney. Any further comments? Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve this item only for the tributary work at a cost of three point six six million, I believe is correct, plus whatever the relevant, relevant city's contingency would be on that.
Correct.
Whatever that is. Okay, at ten percent typically, right?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion as stated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Raise your hand, vote. Motion fails five to one. So I guess, do we need a motion now to decline it? Are you good? You're good, okay. So a motion fails, so that means nothing will be done here? And you will communicate that to the people that need to know that?
Yes, we will.
If we come back, we'll always have to consider it again, and it'll probably cost us more, but that's part of the nature of what we're doing here. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Kane. Thank you, Mr. White, for bringing that forward. Item nine point six, presentation, discussion, possible action regarding an appointment to the Brazos Valley Solid Waste Management Agency Incorporated Board of Directors. Mr. Smith, do you have a motion to make?
I move that the mayor continue and serve a new term.
Do I have a second? Oh, Ian, did you get that? Good, okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second. I will not be voting on this since I'm the subject of the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, and raise your hand.
Aye.
Five, five, zero, one abstention. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate, and ladies, appreciate your support. I will continue to serve honorably for that group. Well, guess what? Items of community interest in council calendar. I noticed that we had a, well, I don't know, IGC I guess comes later, but community interest in council calendar, there's a council calendar in front of you. Quickly go down through it. Tourism, tourism-friendly certification, that's coming up on the fifth. I think council members are invited to the, some kind of an event there. I think we're also, most of us have been inquired regarding Chamber Commerce Annual Banquet. Several of us are going with spouses or partners. Anything else to be highlighted?
A chunk of us are going to go to TML next week.
TML conference, I guess it's, most of us are going up on Tuesday, that's of council, that's McLeaney, White, Nichols, and Wright, and several staff members. Ross, we need to talk about transportation on that, but we can do that tomorrow. Okay. Items, nothing else to report there? Council reports?
Council, or Mayor and council, I just want to take a quick second on community interest. Can you register? City Manager of City Bryan is retiring, and they've done a good job of honoring him, and they will be. But I just want to take a second to acknowledge his service to not only the City of Bryan, but the community, which extends a long time past being city manager, but was their longest-serving city manager, and not an easy job, and one that he carried out exceptionally. He has certainly been a friend and a mentor and a rival at times, and many times I've had the opportunity to work with him to do things for the betterment of the community, and he's certainly been a leader in this community, a well-deserved retirement. And I just want to congratulate him on that because, again, not someone that maybe everybody knows, but probably one of the most important people in the past decade in this community, and happy that he gets to go off and retire to do what I'm sure is another job because he has his own company, and will be doing that. But want to congratulate him on behalf of our staff and City College Station.
Here, here.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much, and I think that event is on the thirtieth, which is Friday, is that correct? There is an event, I think we're, some of us, I think that TML, maybe you're out of town, let me just see. There is an event, so.
I don't think it's public, so.
It's not a public event? Council members weren't invited?
I, I just don't think it's a public event, so I'm not going to broadcast it out here.
That's fine, I know I got an invitation, but that, I couldn't make it for some reason. Don't even remember what day it was, but I will communicate with them independently. Okay, any other comments for item ten? Community interest? Seeing none, council reports on committees, boards, and commissions. IGC was last Monday.
We did, City of Bryan came and gave an economic development presentation. Their Texas Triangle Business Park has one lot left in it at fifty-seven acres. And got some, and dovetailing with what the city manager said, I got some very exciting things going on over there from an econ dev perspective, and their city manager, keen register, has played no small role in that, but a very large one. So good presentation.
Great, thank you. City College Station, you going to come up in the future?
City College Station's on deck for econ dev. If, if staff are ready, otherwise.
Whenever the time, yeah, okay.
We have flexibility.
We're always ready.
We have flexibility, so.
Okay, very good. Anything else on council reports? Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, Mr. Smith.
Transportation Committee just wanted to give everyone a heads up. We had a presentation from TexDOT earlier this week, and the Highway Six widening project kickoff will be on December first. You've already seen some preliminary work going on out there. Y'all just buckle in, it's going to be a mess, but look forward to seeing it happen.
Till twenty thirty was how it was paced out?
Yeah, something like that.
They have a website that is rolling out that has all of the work that'll be done, and I think they're branding it the Big Six. And so it was, it was an interesting presentation that showed what was happening at each and every.
Yes. One thing that that presentation didn't show that I just wanted to remind everybody, we, that our city, the city council voted to do the extra trees option on this in College Station. So this is just, this is something, you're going to get a lot of complaints or calls about tree removal because they're going to remove a bunch of trees, but.
They are already moving a bunch of trees.
A bunch more than they're removing.
Yeah, so our grandchildren can sit in the shade of those trees.
Yes, yes.
Did you mention there's a, there's an event, right?
December, is that the December first event? No, there is an event, I don't remember what day it is.
I think it's, I think it's November, yeah, it's the November the thirtieth, and it's a, like a kickoff party or something out there.
Well, there's an event at Central Park, I mean, at Veterans Park at the pavilion, and that is, that's the one where it's a ribbon cutting for the, for the event.
For the project?
For the project, that's the one I know about. And you said that was on December, November what?
I think it's the thirtieth because the next, it was three days after.
Thirtieth is a Sunday, thirtieth is a Sunday.
Well, then I got it wrong.
So I've got it somewhere in my calendar, but I can't find it at the moment. Seemed to me it was conflicting with something else, and I had to work it around. Oh, here it is, ribbon cutting. Is that the fifth? No, that's another one. Anyway, we've got a couple of meetings between now and then, I'm sure it'll be on our future calendar. Okay. Any other reports of committees, boards? This was, City Transportation Committee, right, Mr. Smith? Okay. Any further items? Okay, future agenda items, a review of standing list of council-generated future items. I think we have a list here which shows currently projected four items for the next meeting. That always gets moved around a little bit because I think staff's going to come back. Well, I don't see any of those. Are there any of those on the, go ahead. You got future agenda besides these?
Yeah. Can we get like an update on sort of just in general, some of the efforts on the historic side of things? We haven't had a new home, historic marker done in like a year. Just kind of get an update from HPC, the, maybe the historical archivist that works under Tanya, just in general, does not have to be anytime soon, we got stack schedule. That can be early next year. But just in general, some of the efforts that the historic side of the city is pushing forward. Are you all cool with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. It could be a report, or it could be a public presentation. Are they scheduled to do something in the next two or three months?
Sorry, I was asking, what did you say, Mayor?
Is HPC scheduled to be making a presentation in the next?
I don't think we have anything lined up, but we'll get something on there.
So you can provide, they can provide us a report, that's what he's asking for.
Yeah, we'll have them come present to you guys.
Okay, good, good, thank you. Anything else for future agenda items?
I have one, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, we got two down here, Ms. McLeaney.
This is a little bit outside of what we usually talk about, but one of the things that's kind of shocked me since I have been a member of council are the number of suicides we have in our community. It's something that is not reported in the media, but we do get notification, especially when there's not a, you know, easy cause of death. So I'm curious to know, maybe do a broad-based evaluation of the mental health resources we have here in town. And I'd be very curious about any city-sponsored activities some of our sister cities may be doing that could further those goals. So I don't, we don't have any information so far as the breakdown of the demographics of these victims, but I would, I would be very interested in seeing if we might could do something as a community to support mental health issues.
How do you feel about that? You want a report? You want, you want the police and community services or somebody to make a presentation, or what?
I don't know what we have available. I don't know what the resources are, and I don't know how, how serious the issue is. It's definitely a much more prevalent concern than just as a lay citizen I was aware of. And it's not a daily or even a monthly thing, but what we. And it's not a daily or even a monthly thing, but we have these little rashes of things. And I, I know that there is a shortage overall of mental health resources. I'd just like to know what we have as a community and what voids we may have. And I'm not sure the best way to go about that.
You're talking about the community, not just the city. You're interested in city's resources, of course, but also much broader than that.
Well, we have a very porous, you know, county for sure.
There are a couple of nonprofits in town that work on mental health, and NARMY comes to mind. And they have National Association of Mental, Mental Health, that's not quite right, but there, there is that organization that does focus on that issue, which includes suicide prevention.
BD works with several different agencies in town, so we can have them help pull something together.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then if it becomes, you know, a policy discussion or direction from council that you want the city to do something else, then that'll be a basis of knowledge to use for that.
Yeah, I would agree. I'm certainly not make advocating a certain course of action. I just think there may be something there that we should, we may be able to address better.
Number, part of what you're interested in is elevating the discussion and particularly looking at city resources, but also community resources.
Correct, and identifying any major voice there maybe.
Are you guys supportive of that? I think we're supportive of that, so I add that to the list. Mr. Yancy?
Thank you, Mayor. By the way, community health needs assessment that we do and the hospitals do. Mental health, always at the top of the list. We always need.
And actually, public health, you, you can bring the public health people into that.
Yes, sir. I'm interested in, and there's absolutely no rush, a presentation from staff on the city's land holdings wherein all or part of the parcel is developable. Not interested in the floodplain stuff unless staff just wanted to include it. But I'd like to get my arms around what all, for a variety of potential policy ideas might flow from that if we knew what we had.
I, I think that's, could be done in a pretty straightforward spreadsheet report, couldn't it? And then if we want to lead it to a, a policy discussion, that's a, probably something we could actually do in strategic planning if you had the data before that.
So I can tell you, we, we have a spreadsheet that we can send out, which you all may have too, that just shows everything we own. And we can certainly parse it out. I mean, I'll tell you, most of what we own, most of it is city facilities and a lot of it is parkland, which obviously, if you were ever going to develop parkland, once it's declared parkland, you got to go back and do some things. So if, we can send that message out or that, that info out. But if, if the presentation is to kind of at least go into it and say, here's what would even be feasible or what you would need to do if you were going to go about that. I mean, again, I mean, in theory, the land sitting with the sign on it is developable. So you could talk about those things, and we could do that, whether it's an agenda item or a strategic planning, whatever.
I'll unbury the headline. What, what I, what I want to see, not, not parks, not city facilities. If the city decided to incentivize a attainable housing program, are there any parcels in our inventory out there at all just sitting idle where all or a portion?
Yeah, so I think we could probably take, unless you want to give a specific criteria. We could basically say what would be reasonable and try to parse that list and then send it to you. And if that was, if you guys see something there and say, okay, we want to talk about this, then we can do that.
I think that's fine. I, I would, I would suggest, he said it doesn't need to be done in a hurry. I would like to see a parsed-out list based on the exhaustive inventory I got that meets some of that criteria. But I, I think the policy with the strategic discussion, we could have that added in as an item on strategic planning, which I assume will come up in late January, early February, correct?
March, usually.
March, are we at the March now?
I thought it was.
Yeah, we, we try to do it, we try to do it in February. We normally do staff, January, and then February, but around then.
If that's not soon enough, do you want a discussion?
That's fine.
Okay, we'll bring it up then. But, but share with us that breakout that identifies properties that would fit into the category he's talking about. Frankly, I'd like to see all the properties that we're willing to sell, which includes Business Park as well. Okay, anything else? Okay, we have recessed the executive session, so we will recess this session and go back to executive to finish that agenda, and then we'll be complete in the evening. Unfortunately, it's after 10 o'clock already.